That's it, that's all right.
All right. Call this meeting to order. Deb, if we can please call the roll.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Here.
Chair Albritton? I'm sorry, Board Member Albritton?
Here.
Board Member Hartman?
Here.
Board Member Kozinski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first, we actually have two meetings this evening. The first meeting that we just started is the local planning agency. If we can please read the first resolution into the record, please.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, making a recommendation that the town council adopt an amendment to the text of the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code to modify standards for certain ingress/egress easements, providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion on this?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have a sort of presentation on this item?
Jeff, well, Cadence from the planning department will present the item. Mayor, just for the councils, to refresh your memory, this was part of the list of items that were brought forward, but there was a typo, so staff pulled it to put it back on. So I'll turn it over to Jeff to do a quick presentation.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, Mayor and Council. What this ordinance does is it modifies the standards for ingress/egress easements, whether it serves a single parcel or up to four. We're looking to modify that. So right now, one landlocked lot that has access, that does not have frontage on a street, on a public street or a private street, can access that street via an ingress/egress/egress that is 15 feet wide. And we'd be increasing that to 25 feet. A driveway that serves two to four parcels currently has to be 25 feet wide. This would be changing into 35 feet. Okay? The reasons for these are multiple. One of the reasons is that it provides more space between the driveway itself and the nearest home, provides additional area for drainage and maneuvering and that type of thing. The second thing this does is it requires that turnarounds be part of an ingress/egress easement. And the reason that is significant is that in order to meet minimum lot size requirements, turnarounds have sometimes been granted as separate easements, fire access easements, turnaround easements, or something similar. And therefore, they're not excluded from the net lot area calculation. This would require that they're part of that calculation. And what, all of these changes, as far as the width of the driveway easements, are consistent with the flag lot ordinance dimensions. So that's the summary.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. Do we have any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any resident input on this item? Seeing none. Resident input closed. I will say, just one quick comment, that I think, you know, this fits in, as Keith was saying, this fits in with a lot of the other items that the council has been doing to kind of improve and fill in some loopholes and things like that and provide more space. And I think this is consistent with what we've been doing, and I'm excited and glad that we're moving forward on these. Russell, if you please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Board Member Albritton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
And Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, item number four is approval of minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or correction to the minutes? Any public correction to the minutes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton?
Yes.
Board Member Hartman?
Yes.
Board Member Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky?
Yes.
And Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Hey, motion to approve.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay.
Let's do adjournments.
I was just checking to see if anybody was waiting.
Okay, so that concludes our local planning agency meeting. Hereby call our regular council meeting to order, if we can please call the roll.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
If you can please join me in the pledge. All right, our next items are quasi-judicials, so Keith, I'll turn that over to you.
Sure, Mayor. The items three and four on the agenda tonight are quasi-judicial in nature. That means that you are serving as jurors to listen to the evidence brought before you to make a determination whether or not the applicant has shown by competent substantial evidence that they've met the criteria of the town's code. The rules of quasi-judicial procedure are on the front page of our agenda tonight. I will not read them in unless anyone needs me to do so. At this point, we'll start with item number three, which is the Martell waiver of plat, and we'll ask the town to read it into the record.
If anybody is going to give testimony on this, if you... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
We can do all of it.
Certainly, okay. This is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP-31-21, to subdivide 4.39 gross acres of property into two lots of 2.03 and 2.26 net acres, generally located at the northeast quadrant of the southwest 54th Place intersection with Southwest 208th Lane, legally described as tract 64 less the west 25 feet in section 34 Township 50 South, Range 39 East, Everglades Land Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book two, page one, of the public records of Miami-Dade County said lands lying and being in Broward County, Florida, unless that portion of tract 64 described in Exhibit A here too, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. At this time, we'll ask that anyone who will speak on the Martell waiver plat, and to save time and efficiency, the Riley's Estates plat, to please stand to be sworn in. You cannot testify before the council unless you've been sworn in.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Who is, a lot of representatives here tonight, who's representing the Martells? Jane? Hi, Jane. If you could please come forward, state your name for the record that you've been sworn in, and you know why you're here, you've read the staff report, and if you agree with staff's findings.
Good evening, everyone. Jane Storms, Police Land Surveyors, 5381 Nob Hill Road, Sunrise, I know, I have, I know, Sunrise, Florida, 33351 for the applicant. I have been sworn. The Martells are here with me this evening as well for this application. We have read the staff report. Remember Mrs. Martell, Mr. Martell? We have read the staff report. We agree with staff recommendation number one. We would like to bring to your attention the staff report that notes that this application was submitted and predated prior to your new criteria and predates the zoning in progress, and council is not necessarily required to apply the terms of the second recommendation to this application. We respectfully ask that you approve the application, subject to recommendation number one.
Thank you. At this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the council if they've had any ex parte communication concerning this item. If so, please disclose.
None.
I have none.
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 Okay, great. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadence to make the complete staff report, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Jane.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, in October of last year, council approved a vacation of right-of-way, or actually a combination of right-of-way and easements on this property. Part of it was on the east side, 30 to 40-foot easement that served no purpose anymore, and part of it was right-of-way for, or an easement on 54th. At this point, the petitioners are requesting a waiver of plat to divide the property into... The property meets all of the lot size and dimensional requirements, having a net area of 4.29 acres and a width of 295 feet. They have a house that they currently reside in on the south parcel and an office building for the nursery with a deck and driveway on the north parcel. The proposed subdivision would not create any nonconformities, noting that the storage building on the north parcel will need to be removed prior to lot subdivision. Both parcels would have sufficient access for a barn and paddock or other agricultural use. Both parcels would obtain access directly from 208th Lane, and no additional right-of-ways required for either 208th Lane or Southwest 54th Place. South Broward Drainage District has reviewed and has no objection. The petitioners have owned this property since 1989 and constructed the current residence in 1998, consistent with the proposed eligibility criteria for the waiver of plat text amendment that is on the agenda tonight for second reading. However, the petitioners have not agreed to restrict transfer of title as proposed in the text amendment, and has, and as recently has been required by the council for other waivers of plat. It is noted, as Ms. Storm stated, that this application predates the zoning in progress for waivers of plat. The council is not obligated to apply the terms of the proposed text amendment to the application. Staff finds that the application does comply with the minimum dimensional access and area standards for the A1 district and is suitable for your consideration for waiver of plat, subject to two recommendations that we're recommending, that we're adding. One of them is to remove the building on the north parcel that's used for office upon either cessation of its use as an office for the nursery or cessation of principal agricultural use on the north parcel. And the second recommendation is that, prior to recordation of the resolution, the petitioner provide and execute a declaration of restrictive covenants in a form acceptable to the town attorney, restricting ownership of the subdivided tract exclusively to the petitioner and one additional party for a period of at least five years from the date the town council approves this application, during which time the petitioner shall continue to permanently reside on the tract and maintain homestead exemption status. This recommendation is added purely for your consideration, consistent with your previous actions and the text amendment. Again, although the council does not have to apply the terms of the text amendment to this application. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Jeff. Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff Cadence at this time? Seeing none, Jane, we're going to turn it back to you if you have additional comments or a presentation.
No comments at this time. Jeff's laid it out pretty clearly, black and white. Thank you.
Perfect. So what we're going to do now is going to open it up for the public to ask any questions or make any comments, then we'll turn it over to the council to ask any final questions. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, if you can just state your name for the record that you've been sworn in.
Mary Gay Chapels. I live at 5901 Southwest 160th Avenue.
And you've been sworn in?
Uh, yes. I have a question. It was stated that they have to live there for five years? I mean, I'm assuming they're plating this property to divide it. If it's divided, then they can still operate and not move the building until the property is sold, I would guess. And secondly, why would I be forced, or why would he be forced, to live there for five years? I'm not quite getting all of that. It's legally being divided into two-and-a-half acre tracts, which, by the way, out there, they have an overlay of one-acre homesites. So they likely could have divided that into one-acre homesites, I would guess. It seems rather confusing out there. It's A1 zoning, and A1 zoning allows a lot, except when you go to divide it, and then it's two-and-a-half acre tracts. But because it has that overlay usage of one-acre homesites, I've seen in the past where they have enforced, oh, well, it's one-acre homesite, so you can do a one-acre homesite. I'll give you an example. It's happened right on Dykes Road. That property was agricultural, and it was two-and-a-half acre tracts. But because there's an overlay of one-acre homesites, they were allowed to build one-acre homesites. So I'm just curious, did I misunderstand what you said? Or can you explain it a little clearer for this old lady?
Thank you. Does any other member of the public wish to testify on this item? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments or want to address any questions?
No concluding comments, and Gay, I think your question will be answered with the discussion that ensues.
Jane, do you have any final comments? None. Seeing none, Mayor, turn it over to you for deliberation because of the fact that it's quasi-judicial and a, within the zoning code, it requires unanimous consent to the town council.
Thank you, Keith. Is there any further discussion from the council on this item?
Steve, I do have a question. Turn on your mic, please.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. The five-year rule, am I reading that the petitioner has not agreed to restrict the deed for five years? Now, is that correct?
That's correct. So we do need to work through that issue.
All right. And seeing as how this was pre, before we did all of our rules, would that still apply to them, or we... I mean, I'm asking...
Yeah, so let me, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jump in there?
Thank you.
All right. So this five-year rule is based on a discussion that we had one or two meetings ago, and then is being brought forward separately for tonight. In that time period, I'll just speak for myself, given a lot of thought to that, and I'm not, I'm no longer comfortable with it, to be honest with you. I feel like when a, when we walk out of, when we approve something in the evening, it should be all said and done. I don't know what the mechanics would be to try and watch a property for the next five years and see what happened there, but it just seems like it would be a lot of, if we were to do that, it would be a lot of mechanics for minimal gain. I think if somebody has lived here for 20 years, the bottom line, which was, this was really my proposal, and the bottom line was I wanted a, an option, a kind of an out for long-time residents. I didn't want long-time residents to be caught up in some of the other things that we're seeing happening, where people will come in, split the property, flip it, make money, and then move on. That's not what we're about. But residents that have been here a long time, 20 years, I think they've earned the right to be able to split their property, and we should be comfortable with that. So I think the 20 years is good, because it does provide this additional option for our residents, our long-term residents. But I would not push, matter of fact, when we get to the other item, I'm going to ask that we actually remove the five years. So I certainly am not pushing for it here.
But, Mr. Mayor, real quick, the reason that that was put there was, how do I always put this, that they wouldn't come in, divide it, and like you said, sell it and take off, all right? Flip it and take off. But the waiver of plat is a lot cheaper and easier to get than going through the entire plating process. If they didn't want to agree to the five years, they could still go to the county and get it done, take much longer. So is that why the five-year period was put in, so that if they wanted to use the waiver of plat, these were the restrictions that they'd have to abide by?
Yeah, it was put in so that individuals would not come in and flip the property. And I get that, and that's a valid concern. From my perspective, having thought about it for the last several weeks, I'm comfortable that if we have a long-term resident and they've decided it's time to split their property, I don't see any reason to have that. I just don't think it's right to have that five-year restriction on it, that's all. I think, I think they, you know, they're a long-term resident of our town. I think, I think they've earned it, you know? They've earned, if they, if they want to flip it, if somebody is doing it for commercial reasons, they can always, as you mentioned, they can always skip the waiver of plat, go through the full plat process, and get it done. But for residents that have been here a long time, I think they've earned the right to have this benefit afforded to them and without the five-year restriction. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to support that, Steve, because after that meeting, I had a number of phone calls, all the way up to last week on this, and that's more of a penalty.
It is.
You know, I'd rather reward our residents that are here a long time with, you know, the opportunity to do it in a less expensive way than start to penalize. And I didn't even think about, you know, how do you enforce this?
Yeah.
If you can't enforce it, then we're really wasting time.
We are.
Steve, could you, could you go, Mayor, could you go back over, because I'm not quite...
Steve always does.
Yeah, or Steve works too. Hey, you sometimes.
Yes.
But I'm not quite tracking on this. The, you're saying you're okay with the 20-year rule?
Yes.
Okay. But you're not okay with the holding it for five years?
Correct.
Ownership?
That's correct.
Even though it allows for an additional party? They could sell it once.
They could.
I mean, it's...
No, the way it is written there, yeah.
Yeah, they could sell it once. But you're saying eliminate that, both of those entirely? For long-time residents?
I'm saying eliminate the five-year restriction.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
On anybody who qualifies as a 20-year ownership?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, this was, this waiver of plat came in, this is like the last one.
I know.
That came through on this.
We...
And I have no problem with what you're saying.
Okay.
Okay, if you want to, if you want to eliminate that, because this, this was really the last year where none of that, or the last incident where none of that applies.
Right.
So I can support it on this one right here.
Great.
So, Mr. Mayor, so if we approve this, then the five-year is still in effect for people coming up in the future, and because this was pre, it was in the hopper before we did our thing, this one could go through, but would the other ones that are coming up? If they're looking for that waiver of plat, the easy way out, would that five-year apply to them?
That's a discussion later on in this meeting.
Okay.
That's, that's what we have to decide later on in the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can support this without that paragraph, too.
Great, awesome, thank you. All right, I think, I think we have a consensus.
The maker of the motion, and the second of the motion, would have to amend their motion to a motion to approve, subject to staff condition one with the elimination of staff condition two. Yeah, I think there was, there was. Oh, well, then the maker of the motion will need to make that motion.
Okay.
All right, I'll break the ice. I'll make a motion that we approve this waiver of plat with the condition number two eliminated on the five-year restriction.
But, but including staff?
And including the staff, other staff recommendations.
Perfect. Second, second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none. Any, any discussion from the residents, public? Seeing none. Any further comments from the public comment?
On this?
Yes. Seeing...
I wouldn't even know where to begin.
Well, the answer was yes. That, that was the restriction, but now we're getting rid of it.
All right, so you're, as far as this particular one, anything else discussed later? This particular one, okay.
You got it.
You know where I'm going?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, you got it. I got it. Okay.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
One and done.
Item two, not item two, item...
Four.
Four. If you could please read that into the record.
This is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number PL-58-21, the Riley's Estates plat, comprising two single-family dwelling lots on 8.4 acres, generally located on the east side of Thoroughbred Lane, approximately 250 feet from its southern terminus, and legally described as Lot Eight of Meadowview Estates, according to the plat thereof, as reported in plat book 152, page 17, of the Broward County Public Records, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Sure, Graham, are you presenting on this one? If you could just state your name for the record that you've been sworn in and that you've read the staff report and whether or not you agree with the staff's findings.
Evening, everyone. Graham Penberkaw, Radel Fernandez, Larkin Tappan, is 200 South Biscayne Boulevard, down in Miami, filling in for Ms. Storms on this one. We have reviewed the staff recommendation. We have no issue with any of the conditions. We'd ask for your approval tonight.
Thank you. Jeff, would you like to present?
The petitioner is requesting approval to replat Lot Eight of Meadowview Estates into two lots of 2.38 and 6.02 acres to be named Riley's Estates. The property features a 1.8 acre lake, 5,200 square foot home, and accessory structures. It's own rural ranches, which requires two net or two-and-a-half acres of area and 125 feet width for each lot. Lot One is proposed to be located in between the existing house and Thoroughbred Lane. The lot is two, just under 2.4 acres in total area and two net acres in area, after deducting the lake, a portion of the lake that's within the lot, and the very small 25-foot ingress/egress easement that connects Lot Two to Thoroughbred Lane, which would serve as a secondary access for Lot Two. Most of the lot's only 158 feet deep, but the petitioners have stated that the proposed residence will fit on the lot in compliance with all setback requirements. Lot Two of the proposed plat comprises over six acres of the property and includes the existing house, approximately one-and-a-half acres of lake, and a one-acre driveway strip that is very unique to this property. You can identify it from, from the space shuttle practically. Connects this property to Hancock Road. Lot Two is approximately four-and-a-half net acres in area, after deducting the lake and small joint access easement at Hancock Road. The lot is approximately 500 feet in width, and it has a buildable area after deducting the lake and the driveway strip of more than three-and-a-half acres. The existing house and accessory structures will continue to comply with setback, lot coverage, and open space requirements. There are two sheds located on proposed Lot One that are not permitted to remain without a principal structure or use. So once the property is subdivided, there'll be accessory structures without a principal structure, meaning they can't be there. Therefore, the sheds will need to be demolished before title to Lot One is separated from title to Lot Two. Lot One will access Thoroughbred Lane, and Lot Two will maintain the existing access to Hancock Road and also have sort of a backdoor access to Thoroughbred Lane through the aforementioned 25-foot ingress/egress easement within Lot One. No additional right-of-ways required for either roadway. Both lots will be served by septic tanks and wells, and Central Broward Drainage has signed off on the plat, and it satisfies all concurrency requirements. The NIX residence to the south of the property occupies Lot Six and a portion of Lot Seven. The remainder of Lot Seven, comprising 1.38 acres, is currently bound in title to Lot Eight. And remember, this is a replat of Lot Eight. Since the NIX has decided not to include the remainder of Lot Seven within the replat, they will release the existing unity of title agreement and enter into a new unity of title agreement binding all of Lot Seven with Lot Six to the south. So in other words, it's going to match the ownership patterns and construction patterns. The recommendation from staff is that council approve this plat, finding that it complies with all requirements of our code, subject to, number one, title to the plat remaining unified until such time as the sheds on proposed Lot One are demolished, and demolition shall be completed within 30 days following... and demolition shall be completed within 30 days following plat recordation. Number two, that the unity of title agreement binding the northern portion of Meadowview Estates, Lot 7 with Lot 8, which is the subject property, uh, shall be released and a new unity of title agreement be executed and recorded, combining all of Lot 7 with Lot 6. Uh, and three, that, uh, maintenance of the ingress egress easement through the plat dedication uh, or separate instrument must be approved by the town attorney as deformed prior to town sign up on the plat. I have executed agreements for all of these things that have been already approved as deformed by the town attorney, and, um, the petitioners no longer proposing to dedicate that backdoor easement, uh, by plat. They're going to do it by separate instrument, and that's all accomplished in the, uh, in the grant of easement and maintenance, uh, agreement. Um, concludes my, my report.
Thank you. Uh, does any member of the Town Council have any questions of Jeff Cadence at this time? Seeing none, and I need to ask before I bring them back up, and I just took it out of order. Did anyone have any ex parte communication concerning this matter?
None.
No.
None.
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 Thank you. Uh, Graham or Jane, do you have anything to add?
It's a long walk just to say no. Uh, again, as Mr. Cadence said, we've provided the necessary documents, or we'd ask for your approval again tonight.
Thank you. I forgot to ask, any other member of the town, uh, public have any comments on this one? Noel?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. My question is on the driveway with access to both Hancock and the other road there. Without a gate, water-like traffic seeks its quickest way to wherever it's going. And people could, could use that as a cut-through without a gate on the NICS property to alleviate any cut-through traffic. So, I think what you have is three lots to the east, one lot to the south, which we are cutting off tonight, and the NICS property in the center. That's five lots. When you do a flagpole lot or a shared driveway, it's four lots. That's five lots. So, please correct me or tell me why we're allowing five lots on a shared driveway? Or can we mandate that they have a gate so there cannot be cut-through traffic for that area? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jeff, before I turn over to the council, do you want to address that?
Sure. Um, I, I don't agree with that assessment. This is, uh, an existing lot with an existing access to Hancock. Um, all we're doing is creating another lot with thoroughbred frontage today. Um, this is a private residential parcel, it's not a street. Okay? Um, so, the same situation that, that would exist with this ingress egress easement to Thoroughbred, which serves, could serve as a backdoor, which I'm sure will be gated, um, could exist today. It's, we're not, we're not changing these, these conditions. We're just, uh, allowing them to carve out another lot, uh, which doesn't share access, uh, with the main lot, which is Lot 2. It's going to have its own independent access to Thoroughbred, so I really don't see, uh, that there's any issue here.
Thank you. Uh, Town Council, Mayor, it's to you for deliberation because it's quasi judicial. It requires, uh, unanimous vote of council.
Thank you, Keith. Is there any, uh, further discussion on this item?
None.
Seeing none. I think we can call the roll.
We need a motion?
Oh, a motion.
I did the same thing.
I'll make a motion to approve staff stipulations.
Thank you.
And the second's with staff conditions as well.
Second with the staff condition.
Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
At least I didn't say motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is next on the agenda, Mayor. I think we have a couple of speakers tonight.
Yes, we do.
We have six speakers tonight, and I'm going to call them up in order.
All right, the first speakers are, uh, from the Sikh Youth Association, Japit Paul and Purnit Singh.
Following is Ruben Allen and then Dee Schroder.
Hello, everyone. My name is Japit Paul Singh.
And my name is Purnit Singh.
Hi, everyone. The Sikh Youth Association is holding their fourth annual Unity and Diversity 5K Run/Walk on April 9th, 2022 at Rolling Oaks Park. As you all know, our proceeds from this race go towards the college scholarship funds. We want to promote cultural inclusivity among the youth along with leadership qualities. We are excited to partner with the town once again and pull off another amazing 5K.
We would also like the town to urge kids to participate and volunteer in which they can receive volunteer hours for their schools. We would also greatly appreciate your support with donations and helping us get in touch with schools and organizations. Another way to help us would be to reach out to HOAs and have them sponsor our event. We hope to make it as successful as previous events have been.
On another important note, the early bird registration discount is until February 14. We urge everyone to take advantage of this opportunity and sign up as soon as possible. Flyers have been, have also been printed out and placed on the entry table. You can go onto the Run sign-up website and search for Unity and Diversity. You could also go to the sikh youth association.org. We hope to have, ha, we hope to have your support and participation. See you all on April 9th. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate you coming out and, and sharing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruben Allen, followed by Dee Schroder, followed by Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, council. Hello, just following up. We, uh, saw each other in here two weeks ago in the issue with the power outage. Uh, you have anything to, uh, give back to me on that? In regards to anything that the town has, uh, taken any steps with the contractor and try to make a resolution on this, please?
I will, after public comment, um, I'll actually ask, I think Legal, to, to make a comment regarding that for you. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Dee Schroder, followed by Noel Hollingsworth, followed by David Sears.
Dee Schroder, 5501 Thoroughbred Lane. I just have a couple of questions, and it's really addressed to all of yous. Um, the first one is, I would like to know, you all went to Tallahassee. Uh, my first question is, who did you see when you were up there? The second question is, what did you accomplish up there for the town? I would also like to see if you could put on the agenda. We wanted to start discussing the, the speed limit throughout the town, not just in Sunshine Ranches, but Country Estates, Rolling Oaks, and everywhere. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. It's the new year, it's time for the orphan projects. Uh, update on the water retention, stormwater retention area that's north of the C-11 Canal. It appears there's some movement towards the start of that project, which I was told would start in 2022. The roads that go from Weston out to 27, both of them have been blocked off. There can no longer be any traffic on those roads. So, that's an indication that possibly the project is going to start. And that was done by, uh, South Florida Water Management with the Corps of Engineers. There's a little sign, microscopic, on the barricades. Uh, let's see. Multipurpose equestrian crossing at Bonaventure Boulevard, which is the restriping of the lines, that still is up in the air. Uh, the master drainage plan, while I'm told that it has started for the western section of town, uh, I've heard nothing happening on it whatsoever. So, I'd like to have some input on that. And the equestrian area signs that were taken down back when Griffin Road was made for lane that designated our town as an equestrian area have not been put back up. The only sign is on Dykes Road, up by Sheridan, and we have three other signs that were taken down and never put back up. Uh, three blinking caution lights on the trail entrances at Griffin Road, 193rd, at the dam, and 209, still have not been put up. And we need to request, work with Broward County to get those up because those are entrances to the trail. Uh, the Weston Road and Bonaventure Boulevard bridges over the C-11 Canal have pedestrian crossing lights. A high button to the crossing activation pole is necessary for equestrians to be able to easily and safely cross Griffin Road. And that would be similar to the one that is installed at Volunteer Roads, that they do exist. And, uh, at that point, I'm going to leave it at that. That's enough for you guys to play with if you want to, and I hope you would. These are orphan projects, which have been going on, some of them for over 15 years now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, David Sears, followed by Debbie. Then, uh, final speaker, get.
Good evening. David Sears, 5501 Southwest 130th Avenue. Um, we got an issue with bulk pickup, and there's illegal dumping going on, and it's, they say it's illegal dumping, but it's coming from a residence, um, on the same block. They're putting it on an empty, uh, on an empty lot that they're trying to sell on 130th. There's been a mattress sitting there for over a month, and now it's turned into a pile of, they're cleaning out the house, I guess. And then for three and a half weeks on, what is that? Holaty, there was furniture sitting there, and that finally got picked up. And then somebody in my front yard on the town's property, after my road, somebody dumped a bunch of rocks out there. Um, we just need to try to figure out who picks up bulk, what does bulk, and everything else. But we have neighbors out there that have cameras, and, you know, bulk pickup comes and goes, and that pile still sits there. So, we just need to address that. Thank you.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th. I'm just, fact is to sit, um, share with you in regards to the drainage project out west. So, we've given it time, watched as the process went along. I believe it's complete now. Um, I just, I can't urge you guys enough to really look at this project and look at what went right, what went wrong, and really, before you start the next project, even if you have tax dollars, tax dollars that have a deadline of when a project needs to get done, don't just jump into it because you have this deadline. I, I, let's make sure that the project that's being done is a necessary project or even a needed project. Because quite frankly, on our street, we didn't have a puddle after that 100-year storm in, what, September, October 2020. And our, our rainwater, we, it went in, I don't know if it's the proper word, is a swale in between the properties, if it's still called a swale, or if it's only a swell in the front, but all our water went into the swales and then into our, into the ground, and it went away. But it never flooded. Right now, in, in front of our house, and, and it's just very inconsistent in the way those swales were dug. So, I have a ditch on one whole side of my driveway, and then I have a acceptable kind of thing on the whole other side. But my husband can't, I mean, he, we, for over 30 years, he's worked so hard to keep our yard looking nice. And it's just, it, it, it's just, it's a mess. And he can't even, at this point now, he can't even mow our front yard. It's not possible to mow the front yard on the one side of the driveway to the street. You just can't. Um, so, I just, and I just had a question that maybe, um, a town attorney can answer later as far as the liability. Who has that liability? Is it property owner's liability if somebody gets hurt in my ditch now? Or, um, or where, where exactly is that liability? Because I, it's just the way it is now, I really feel like some of these areas, like I said, it was, it's inconsistent. So, some of those areas where it's just a bit much, maybe more, I don't know what it's called, but the sand that goes into the grass, whatever that's called, but maybe some more of that can be put in there so it becomes more usable. Because again, it's just, it's just not acceptable that you can't mow your front lawn, that you can't be on your riding mower and complete your yard and have to take a weed whacker out or something else and not have the nice lines, whether it's silly or not. I mean, that means a lot to him, to have his little rows of.
Sure.
Mowing the lawn. Um, I had something else. But that's all. Just, just look at it from one project to the next and just, like, not every street has the same issues. So, just look at each one before you rush to the project. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're the final speaker.
Well, that's possible. Okay. First, I want to talk about the trash that's being dumped. Over on Rancho, which is Maluka and Luray, they, first of all, um, the one that's opposite that property line, it's a pasture with a barn. They dumped trees they took out, and it became a prove who put the trees there. It wasn't one or two, they cleared their corner of Malucas. And it was right across the street, and when the trees disappeared, they appeared across the street. But when I reported it, they said, "Well, we can't prove it was theirs." I said, "Well, go over there and you can see where you cut them down." And so eventually, they sat there for almost a month, and somebody hauled it away. I don't know whether that bulked it because I had reported it or the people which they cited and said it wasn't theirs hauled it away. I don't know. But right after that, a big load of roofing material was dumped there, right near the power lines on Luray, I mean, on Maluka. Then, a week later, I reported it right away. Then a week later, the interior showed up of the building. You were going to put, uh, $600,000 worth of cameras. When you put them in, shoot them so you can shoot the, the roads in Sunshine Ranches because everybody that has cameras are only taking pictures of their driveway. And any road frontage, they're not getting unless their drive is picking it up. Because I asked to see if anybody had any shots. That's one of those issues. Then, bulk has been so inconsistent, I have customers over there, and they keep calling me, "Is bulk through? Are they not picking up anymore?" But they missed us for four weeks, and nobody even cited them for having the bulk out. But it was out there for four, it wasn't too big or too little or anything like that. They just missed it. That's all I can tell you. That was on Maluka as well. Um, there was something else, I should have wrote it down because I get these brain farts, pardon the expression, and I forget what I'm going to tell you. I don't get the opportunity that much. Um, oh, the coy dogs. So, everybody is familiar. You had a lecturer here who discussed coyotes. They are not coyotes. They are called coy dogs. They have annihilated my sheep. And we can kill them. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's no more public comment. Uh, Mayor, if you want me to just to address two quick items for.
Please.
For Debbie Green. Debbie?
Yeah, she's there.
Sorry, I just couldn't see you. Um, the, the swale is the town's well. So, the town has the liability, you don't, as a homeowner, have liability for the town's property. It's owned by the town. Uh, and then the other question about the insurance. I saw an email from the insurance agent this morning, Mayor. I think you were copied on it as well.
Yeah.
That they're fully investigating the claim and, uh, that they'll get back to him as soon as they have the final paperwork that they need.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, uh, just to piggyback on that. I mean, it's, it's in process. Um, insurance claims take a little while to go through, but it's in process. They're working on it. Um, um, I don't know what else to say. It's, you know, it's not, it's not being stonewalled, it's not being delayed in any way that I know of. I think that, as far as I know, and I firmly believe that the town is facilitating it as best they can, uh, we're trying to move it along, and it's, 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 you know, but it just does take a little bit of time. Yeah. Um, I'm, I do have several comments for other ones. I'm going to hold it off till my comments, um, but, uh...
I'm, I do have several comments for other ones. I'm going to hold it off till my comments, but there's more coming. All right, board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening? All right.
I'd like to speak on behalf of the education advisory.
Turn the mic.
On behalf of the education advisory board. We have, the barn dance is going to be held on March 12th. So there's still tickets available. And so if anybody would like to come, it's an awesome event. All the proceeds from the event all go to the town's college scholarship. And then also on, oh, just following up on the Sikhs youth announcement, the 5K will be on April 9th and this year it's going to be in the Rolling Oaks area.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other board reports?
George Morris, Drainage Board. Same thing as last month. They made the same announcement, basically rolled over. And the comp board as well. I'm not the chair, I'm the vice chair. That didn't happen. We didn't have a quorum last week or the last, last meeting. It hasn't happened in a long time. Usually, maybe one out of five years, we don't have a quorum. It was surprising we didn't have a quorum. Nonetheless, Astronaut Foundation, we met the other day. We had a great conversation over, talking about the carnival, what a great success it was. And we're talking even bigger and better things for next year. I'm looking forward to working with the council and discussing some of the things that we want to do and and also improving the property. And I want to thank Gary, our last council meeting for bringing up the fact that we mentioned about improving that park. We would love to see something there, a bathroom facility or some sort of movement on that. I'm also looking forward to doing the farmer's market. Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, I heard that, you know, the wheels are starting to turn slowly. And there is a local contractor in town that I have talked to me and wants to donate things and, and help with, with the actual process. On that note, thank you very much.
Thank you, George. All right. Seeing no further board reports, council member comments.
I'll go.
All right. Go for it.
Break the ice. First off, thank everybody for being here and thank you to the six people, or did one go to sleep on YouTube who are watching, so, watching us live. Just a few items of note. I'm not going to bore everybody, so this will be kind of, kind of quick. Just a clarification for people with bulk. If you have a lot of coconuts and loose debris, it needs to be in clear bags or cardboard box. We've gone through this. You can't put it in the black trash bags. People are putting all kinds of hazmat stuff is what's been going on. And the hauler won't pick it up if it's in, they can't see in the bag through, through either a clear bag or, or like a box. Because there's a lot, there was a lot of coconuts on my street the other day and we had, we had to get that clarified with the hauler because, and people are abusing it, putting paint cans and batteries and things like that. It really contaminates the load. You know, wherever it's going. Something I want to run by the council, just, this is just a fun topic. I was going to bring it up at the Parks Board, but I didn't have the opportunity the other night. And so I was just wondering how the council would feel about, we have the town five acre that we should really call it something that's us, you know, and, and I could think of something like, you know, Southwest Preserve or, you know, something to that effect, you know, piggybacking on Preserve Our Lifestyle. But I want to throw it back into the Parks Board or we do a contest and put it in the newsletter. What you, you know, guys can answer me when you, when you come around, you know, on that. If you want to do a contest, you're going to throw it back to the Parks Board and let them figure out a name or something like that. But, but we really need to stop calling it the town five acre. And, and all of that. Ms. Green mentioned the education advisory barn dance on the 12th. Tickets are still available. The 5K at the barn is going to be April 9th. We're, Rolling Oaks is sponsoring its annual Easter egg hunt with the Easter Bunny on the second of April. We have hazmat at the barn on the 12th, same day as the barn dance, but it'll be in the morning. And there's going to be shredding and prescription drug drop off. Town hall is closed on the 21st for President's Day of, of February. The DMV Flowmobile is going to be here on the 23rd from 10 to 2. And Marty Care's office, Broward County Property Appraiser, will be here on the 17th from 12, from 10 to 12 to answer any of your questions. And I'm going to wrap it up with a trivia question and I'll answer it in about two minutes and nobody's allowed to Google it. If anybody can name the country with the most islands. It'll blow you away when you realize who it is. The country in the world with the most islands. Bob?
Alaska?
Nope.
Canada?
Nope. Give up?
Give up.
Sweden.
Really?
Two hundred and sixty-seven thousand islands.
Holy cow.
You can look it up.
Is that at high tide or low tide?
I, I got, I got a funny feeling it's at any tide. And Norway's second with two hundred and thirty-seven. Don't ask me how come I remember that. Anyway, I yield my time, sir.
Yeah, who wants to follow that one up? I'll go next.
Thank you, Bob.
I've got a bunch to cover and a lot of it concerns the, the paving projects out west. So as the, the current project was going on, I went out there when it first got started and they started doing the swell work. And when I saw that gigantic pile of dirt on Griffin Road, I took another ride through there to make sure that, you know, I understood what was going on. And I didn't go back until they started the paving work and it was a couple of weeks. And I went again yesterday. And, you know, everything looked fine to me. I'm not an engineer. And yesterday, when I drove around, it just coincidentally happened to be after a rainstorm. And there was a lot to see. You know, I, I, Debbie and I took the ride together because she's been pretty vocal about what the concerns are, so I figured she could point them out. They're very obvious. You know, let, let me kind of go through it point by point. You know, at the two intersections, there was standing water. Our primary reason to do this project is to get the water off the roads. It's in intersections that are crowned properly. We didn't get much rain. I mean, yesterday, all day it rained, but it was a misty rain all day. Maybe we got half an inch of rain. There was half an inch of rain sitting in those two intersections when we drove past at about four o'clock in the afternoon or so. So right off the bat, we kind of missed the mark on two intersections and I don't know if we can go back and fix that. I mean, I, I heard we had a walk-through last Friday. I don't know if these things were cited or brought up to the GC because unless it's raining out, you're not going to see standing water. Then going along again, and they're on 199th and 50th Manor and 201 and 50th Manor. You know, they, they shouldn't have any submerged areas. The center of the roads have gaps. You know how they pave down one side and come back? Well, generally, they make sure that there's good overlap there. Usually a guy follows with a rake, making sure that there's no groove in the middle because that's a perfect opportunity for water to seep right through the middle of the road. I can't tell you how many examples I saw of that on 201 and 203. You know, maybe as the cars drive over it, over time, those, those gaps will seal. I mean, I'm hoping for the best. I'm not sure, again, what we do about that, whether we get them back out there. I don't want to see them pour in tar. Maybe they need to be rolled further to close the gaps on it. The edges of the road have asphalt, in some cases, four and five inches thick. We saw the same thing on 188th. We saw the same thing on 210. They're trying to make the road even on the sides. And what they're doing is they're going off the edge of the roadbed and they're basically paving over dirt. One of the guys who I sat next to at the Country Estates meeting on Monday night was complaining that the pavement is cracking in front of his house. I swung past there today. The reason it's cracking is they paved off the roadbed. So as that stuff hardens and vehicles drive on the edge of the road, it breaks right off and there's a strip in front of his house. I mean, he's got every right to complain. It wasn't done properly. And at this point, the asphalt is still fairly soft out on, in the current project. Something needs to be done because it's going to look, it's going to look pretty bad in no time at all. The road will be cracking on the edges and I don't know, again, what the limits of that are, whether it just cracks down the side of the road, but still, I mean, people are now going to be cleaning up asphalt. Not a good place for us to be. One of the major problems I saw with that approach of asphalt being this thick is that they begin the swales along the edge of the road. Instead of starting the swell a foot back, and I realize conditions change throughout the, the sides of the road. But what you now have, and this is kind of what Noel was talking about. If you pull a car down in there, a car, I'm not talking about a pickup truck. You're probably going to bottom out because of the gap and then you're pulling forward into a swell. And everybody knows our swales are used for parking when you have parties and things like that. I mean, it happens everywhere. So I see a lot of either tearing up, gouging the asphalt with vehicles or vehicle damage. And from what I just heard, we have liability on this. Seems to me, again, I'm not an engineer, if you start the swell in a little bit, you come up, you don't have to meet the road. But come up fairly close, it's going to be a lot safer. You know, we've heard complaints about people not being able to walk in the side. I didn't see evidence of that. Certainly, I ride horses. You can ride horses throughout any of these areas. But there may be damage to vehicles in the way it's currently laid out. The swales are not consistent. That was one of the things that Debbie and I talked about regularly as we drove around. As you're driving, you'll see a swell eight feet wide in front of this house because there's plenty of right of way available. Then you go to one foot wide because they've got some palm trees. Then you've got another one that's two feet wide because they've got a mailbox and some other things. And when you're driving down, now, it may not make a difference over time, but the big issue I see is if, if I had a one foot deep swell that's three feet wide, which that's kind of, maybe Debbie's is four feet wide. Every time I cut the grass, I'm going to be scalping that grass. And every time I'm finished and I look at that, I'm going to say, the town really screwed me over on this. This looks bad. And that's throughout the area. It's, they're all different. And again, the solution may be rather than us, you know, do surveying and do all that, have a landscape designer or a PE go through the area and look at where we're intending on putting the swales and design something that's going to flow properly. Because to Debbie's point, and we saw this all over the place. You've got a swell that actually has a hump between the new swell and the swales that drain out to the back of the property. And I realize we put them there to hold water, but some of them go uphill towards a downhill. The water will never flow. They'll end up, their driveways will be flooded. The water's going to back up. It's going to go in, in the wrong directions. So, you know, concerning the swales, they don't really match the contours of the land that's there. And again, if this were my yard, you know, me not being on the council, I might have a truck back up on a weekend and drop a load of lawn sand and hope I get away with it, but, you know, and fill all this stuff in. The swales definitely need some more work on them. The grass, I think we need a little better solution and, and as recently as Monday night, where we've reminded ourselves as to why we use the behia grass. Now, those of us who understand why, you know, essentially we put behia in because it's, it holds up much better during the dry season when it's installed than in the, if, if we put in St. Augustine. I think we need to give people the choice. And the choice would be, send us back this card if you want us to put St. Augustine in, town, put St. Augustine in. If we don't hear from you, you're going to get behia. I took a ride around today. Debbie and I went out yesterday. I took a ride around today because I wanted to look at the complaint on 188th. And I spoke to a number of these residents that were out and about one guy was cutting his grass and I, I pulled over, I introduced myself and I, I asked him if he was the owner. He was. And I asked him about the paving project. He loves the roads, but he hates what we did to his yard and, and the neighborhood. And his complaint was that, you know, he, out of his own, his own cost, he's got St. Augustine in there. He put it, he told, he had a landscape crew come in, tear out what we put in and put in his own stuff. Now, you know, then he starts pointing to other neighbors on the street that opted for St. Augustine. And, you know, I said, well, they're, they'll, they'll put it in, right? He goes, not that one. We'll be looking at a blank spot until the weeds take it over. That's the way we're leaving it as the town. I mean, I'm not going to blame the people that don't want to put it back in. That's the way we, we need to take ownership or leaving that site when, when the project is finished. Nobody's going to stand there and say, well, he didn't put the St. Augustine in like you're supposed to. You have two choices of grass. If you don't respond, you're going to get the behia otherwise. Now, I realize that the maintenance of it is significantly different in the wintertime for St. Augustine because we don't get the rain. That should be made clear on whatever we send out. If, if it dies, you're still responsible for it. Town's not going to come back and replace it. If you don't have a sprinkler system, you know, it's, it's really your ball of wax. So that's the grass and I, I referenced the cracking on 188th. I mean, at the end of the day, the neighbors that I spoke to today, one is very pleased with the whole thing. He doesn't care much about grass, according to him, you know, and, and he doesn't see the issues that we're bringing up. And he never noticed the swell issue. So, you know, there's probably half the neighborhood or a quarter of the neighborhood, it doesn't really cross their mind. But I, I really think we're giving ourselves a black eye and in my profession, every time we complete a project, we do lessons learned. We ask ourselves the same questions. What do we do right? What do we need to improve? And what do we need to do better on the next project immediately? This isn't something that can wait. And I honestly think we need to do this in a public forum because, or a report out to us on, on what's been done. You know, what we need to change because we're hearing some of the same problems over and over again on these paving projects. I don't know whether we should bring in a, you know, a CEI company that's going to look at it throughout the project to make sure they're conforming with spec. I'm not sure if that's Rod's responsibility or if he even has the time for it. But what I'm seeing is project after project, we're having, we can't keep blaming it on COVID. We've got significant problems that we need to resolve. So I don't know if anybody's got any feedback on this, if you wouldn't mind entertaining a couple of minutes or if you want to hold it all to the end. It's your call, Mayor.
I certainly have feedback on it as well.
So let's wait until you go or, you know, it's up to you.
No, I, I guess I'll add on right now. And I know Andy has some thoughts on it as well.
Up for a discussion?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll just handle this item now. Yeah, no, it's, it's, it definitely is an issue and, and we have already talked about, you know, a lessons learned. I agree with you a hundred percent. When you do a project, it's important to do that and identify not only what went well, but how what we need to do improve. And we've, we've had a number of conversations like that. I think it starts at the very beginning that we need to do a better job of informing the residents of what's going to be happening in their area right up from the, the get-go, you know, I don't think, I know I talked to some residents out there that when the project was half done, they thought it was a drainage project because that's what they saw. They saw that their, the swales were put in there. They didn't even realize that the road was going to be repaved. So, you know, that's on us for not communicating what the full project is going to be. As far as the grass, I, I don't have a problem with your proposal. I, I, I like it. My only concern with it, actually, I do have a problem with it, I guess is a better way to put it. My, my concern with it is that I want to be fair, not only to the residents in the future, but the residents that have already had the project done, right? And so they don't, if we go that route strictly, we don't, we don't really have a solution for those folks that have already completed the project. So I was thinking more of a, that we would by default put in the behia. If they did not want the behia in there, then we would basically pay the difference to the resident of the difference between the behia and the St. Augustine, which comes out to about $75 a pallet. And, and we would offer that to, not only to the folks that in the future, but we could offer that to the folks in the past as well. So, so those folks that have already gone in there and put the St. Augustine in, we can reimburse them that amount. That was just my, my thought.
Way to work backwards.
Yeah, yeah, so it kind of covers everybody. But, but I'm open to other proposals. I want, I want to do the right thing. I want to do the right thing. One of the things that, I also have driven up that road a few times, obviously, in the last couple of weeks. I am very concerned about the inconsistency that you've seen, we've all seen. That's a real issue. And I, and I, but I want to sit down, there, there may be, there may be, I don't want to jump to conclusions that it was done incorrectly. I want to understand why it was done the way it was. It may look to the, it, it may, it may have been done wrong. Or it may be that just to the uninformed eye, it looks like it was done wrong. The one, the one element of it that I, I am really concerned about is, is how deep it goes and the fact that you can't mow it comfortably. Because this should be, by all intents and purposes, as I know, it should be no more than a four to one slope. And you can mow on a four to one slope. And when I drive through there, it looks significantly deeper, steeper than, than a four to one slope. And so I do think we need to follow up and look at that. Than than a four to one slope. And so, um, I do think we need to follow up and look at that.
Um, I think I could just jump in on that.
Sure.
I would agree. It's along the edges, it's steep. Then you get to the bottom, which is fairly flat for several feet. So again, jumping on the mower, you're gonna, you're gonna hack that down every time you get on the mower until eventually you've carved that out and created new problems.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I was, I was an observer on the walk.
I apologize. I always got my back to you.
That's all, it's fine. No biggie. Relax. It's a bigger target, I think. Uh, no, I'll get inside. I was, I was part of the, as an observer with the, on last Friday. As we were walking around and we actually went out with a level on a lot of those and the deepest one we found was nine inches. At the, at the center point. That was Noel was there with us, by the way.
Okay.
And so we went around and yeah, all of these things became apparent. And it was very interesting, and I'm not saying they're right or wrong, because I don't, I don't know enough about it.
Yeah.
But it was very interesting to hear Rod's explanation of why one side of the street did not have it deep and the other side did.
Yeah.
And it dealt with how the water flowed from one to the other. It was, it was, you know, total engineering. Uh, concept where the north east side of the street was hardly had any slope to it. And the, uh, west side of the street had a pronounced slope, but the canal was on the back of the, of the, of the, uh. The second street. And the water had to go that way. And there were natural depressions as Ms. Green mentioned between the. Between the houses and they were trying to target those. So it, you know, there's not an absolute here.
Yeah.
We've gotta take them, you know, each situation one at a time. You know, and then we had existing drains over on, I think it was on fiftieth and two oh, wanna say two oh two?
Yeah.
Yeah, two oh two, that were already there in concrete. And there really isn't, and we raised, then we raised the road road up another two or three inches. And these became like a liability. And then, uh, the contractor came up with the idea of putting, uh, bollards there. Uh, because you can't really move the drain up.
Right.
You know, and but it's still a a steep drop into it. You know, and and there were all these other little things that came up. And then Rod was working on them all. Uh, the sod contractor, one of the things we were talking about was the sod contractor had the possibility of cutting sod. Putting a second layer of behia in the middle of the trough was another possible solution and and unfortunately Rod's got COVID.
Yeah.
He can't be here to, you know, explain all this, but that's, we were going through all this stuff and 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 I was just an observer.
Yeah.
So let's, you know, make that very clear and. Um, he, they were explaining how they could add another layer of behia down the strip down the center. Where the landscaper, there was an additional charge for it, but I I suspect it's not gonna be that, that that onerous. Um, where he could gauge that he could, the guy that actually cuts the sod, the owner of the company was there. And he mentioned that he could cut the sod thicker, meaning more earth on it instead of, uh, uh, like a three inch base instead of a. Uh, inch and a half or something like that. And they roll it. And then they can roll it out in sections. So Rod was working on all of that.
Right.
And and I'm pretty sure Andy's probably got more to say about it. But I'm just giving you my observations where I was a week ago. You know, with that and we were, and we must have probably made, I I don't know if Noel was counting, maybe ten, twelve stops, maybe more. Uh, all around looking at different stuff and then went down one ninety sixth, same thing. And there were a lot of existing drains. That were being asphalted to, that were already there. And so when you look at ones that weren't, that weren't asphalted to. And then ones that were, the the asphalt was already there. Uh, unbeknownst to me, it looked, it looked almost brand new and pristine. So there was a lot of stuff going on and and Rod. Like I said, we really need Rod here. Uh, but unfortunately not here and and I'm sure Andy's got more to say about it. But those are, those were just things that I that I remember seeing, um, last Friday as we went all the way around.
Yeah, no, that's awesome, Gary. I thank you for sharing. And that's, that's what I mean. I mean, I think we need to look at this. Um, from, from the professional viewpoint as well as the aesthetic. We we can't, we can't do one or the other. We've we've gotta look at both. But I think that there may be, as you're pointing out, there may be different elements that from an engineering standpoint. Um, don't look right, but are right.
Right.
Um, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things very briefly. Uh, as the Vice Mayor alluded, uh, Rod Lay's on the disabled list, so he's not able to join us tonight. I know he is watching from home, but he's also got the the delay, the time delay, so, uh. And I don't think he's in a position to call in and have a lengthy conversation. So, well, I'll, I'll leave him alone. I'll give him the free pass, uh, for this evening. Although, as I said, he is following the discussion, so he will be certainly very aware of it.
Good.
Uh, the second thing I'll say is yes, they did, they did a walkthrough on Friday. That was not a final. That was a walkthrough with the contractor. We have not signed off on the project. This remains a work in progress. So the the issues that you're all aware of, we, you know, we'll be able to address. We'll either address what we can or Rod will give you the explanation of why something may be the way it is. And that that obviously will be for council to to decide. One thing I wanna remind you all is. In carrying out these programs, we as a staff, and I'll say Rod, I and everybody else involved in it. Has held to or tried to hold to as best we can, the standards that have been developed throughout the Tis Door project over the last few years. We know that we've gotten some pushback through our concerns with things like the swell work, et cetera. Just wanna remind you all, the the way to change that process is to take it back to the beginning and we have this teed up. For a D I A, Drainage Infrastructure Advisory Board, dis- discussion. So I expected very robust discussion on the policies, the procedures, how we carry out the Tis Door projects. That meeting was set for coincidentally while you were in Tallahassee. We did not wanna go ahead with that meeting. While the council wasn't there to be able to attend. So I expect that to be at the next D I A meeting for their discussion. Uh, you all attend those meetings, so so you'll, you'll see that discussion. There'll be a chance to air some things out. They'll finalize some recommendations or not changes to the existing policy. Well, that that will then come back to the council to ratify. And address. So you'll, you'll get your opportunity to make those changes and address those things. But just to close, I wanna remind you, that project out west is not final at the present time. So I I appreciate all the concerns. I I know that Rod, you know, as I said, has heard it from home. I I know that he'll have, uh, an appropriate response to some of the comments that that you've all made tonight and I'll look forward to sharing that with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of other comments on this.
Yep.
You know, Debbie's comment on lawn sand, the the lawn sand fixes a lot of things. And when I looked at some of these swales and Gary, I estimated it about a foot deep was about the deepest. That's why I wasn't calling them ditches. They're, they're, they're swales.
Just for the record, we were using a level.
Mm-hmm.
And and tape.
Sure.
Off the road surface on everyone that we checked.
Right.
It was all done with a, you know, a, a, a four foot level.
Right.
So it went out, it went out to the deepest portion.
But I think the the attack of the slope is is what the issue is. You know, if if slope gradually at a four to one. My big old scag is gonna nicely follow that, but you've got it going right down. It's just gonna hack it off and again. Not an engineer, but if it were my front yard, I'd be out there with a rake and some lawn sand trying to level things off.
I'm not arguing that issue.
Yeah, yeah. So, um. I did wanna address, uh, and Andy, maybe on your comments, you can, you can, uh, further elaborate because I don't recall all the details. But, uh, I know when the county, uh, put the guard rail in and, uh, we had asked them to put. Horse access through, I believe originally they were only gonna do four. And then I think we got them up to nine. Uh, and, uh, when they had put the lights in, they told us no crosswalks, no buttons, nothing. They don't want it to be confused with a, uh. A school crossing. And as well, when we went back for, I think, the other two or three sets of lights that would have been appropriate. They were done. They'd spent the money on the project. So that is, uh, that project, as far as they're concerned, is done. We need to take it off our list because. Unless we go back and ask them for more, I don't think anything else is gonna happen there. Uh, the multi, on the multipurpose trail on Bonaventure, um, I addressed that with the Weston. Commission right after you brought it up to me, right after I got elected. And I got a round, no, we're not doing anything to that intersection because of the schools there. Now, if there's a prior agreement I'm not aware of that Weston signed, um, and Andy, I don't know if you've got anything in archives on that. Okay, all right. So I'll leave that for you to close out, um. David, thank you for the feedback on, uh, on bulk. Um, we're having the same problem all over town. I keep asking, how are we holding these folks accountable? And I'm, I'm not comfortable. They keep blaming it on COVID drivers. They have every excuse in the book. Well, yeah, um, and, uh, we're, our contract is, uh, as the mayor discussed in the last meeting. Uh, it's time to start negotiating a new contract, so we'll try to fix the problems next time. But as I recall, when our last contract, uh, was reaching its final year or so. And a lot of the conditions were different. It was two parties that were at war, uh. We have the same kind of service. They didn't show up at my house for, you know, several weeks in a row. Uh, typically, you know, what we've been telling everybody is, uh. Call them, call us, let us know because if there's illegal dumping, you know, unless somebody calls it in, they don't stop on on vacant lots. You know, if there's a vacant lot and there's a pile of trees, bushes, furniture, anything, they just drive past because they're not allowed to pick up on vacant lots. Um, but we hear you. It's, it's going on everywhere. So today was the monthly M P O meeting and, uh, two very interesting factors came out of it. One is they're planning now, they're doing a study that should finish up this year on widening the turnpike to twelve lanes. From five ninety five to, I think they said Wiles Road. Yeah.
Wow.
Pretty insane. There is, there was major pushback from a lot of the cities that surround because. Not only are they planning on widening the road or investigating, is the way they kept using the word. They're also, uh, a lot, I was with the turnpike for seven and a half years, so I know a lot of the ins and the outs. But anybody who drives the turnpike eventually sees the silver pipes that come up out of the ground and go back down. They are trying to acquire right of way for, that's a thirty six inch pipe in the ground now, two more pipes. We had an explosion a few years ago down in Sunrise. They killed people. Because there was a construction accident with those pipes. Now, I realize we have to have pipelines for fuel and and things to move through, uh, from the ports to. To where they need to go, but, uh, this is really a capitalistic venture on the state's part here, which I don't necessarily agree with. But, um, the the bigger problem is a lot of the cities that border it, like, uh. Coconut Creek and Pompano Beach and Coral Springs, they're looking to take homes. They're looking to move their rights of way out as much as ninety feet on each side. And that's, you know, that's a whole street. That backs up to the turnpike. So they're, I don't, I, you know, they're, they're doing their public input on all this and it it'll be interesting. The last time they did a widening, which is when I was still with the turnpike, uh. They said they'd never go more than ten lanes and they never talked about additional pipes and and all that sort of thing. So there's. There's considerable pushback right now. And then, of course, you've got people on the M P O that. See this as part of the future and they're trying to talk it up, but, uh. There was a significant amount of opposition from the cities that, uh, that wrapped the turnpike on both sides. So that was kind of interesting. The other part that was, uh. Interesting in kind of a fun way, but it might be an option for us. Is Miramar did a project a few years ago, three, four years ago, where. They painted the street with paint inside the boundaries of the road. And they didn't give the dimensions and the original presentation on this was given before I was on the M P O, so I don't know the details of it. But what they're, what they did was they made the street look narrower to slow down traffic. And in Miramar, it actually worked, but the project didn't get legs. And what happens is they're not painting this with the same kind of, uh, paint they use for the lines in the road. It's a high-end house paint because they want it to wear off in a few years. This isn't something you wanna do all over town. But when you've got some areas like one sixty what, uh, where people speed all the time. You put a couple of these in there and people begin to be conditioned that take the road regularly to drive slowly because. It's not something you think about. It's something you do automatically. We do it when we're driving. When you see a light starting to change way off in the distance. You don't think about covering the brake or starting to accelerate your vehicle. You do it. Well, the same thing, it tricks the mind into it. Now. There's a project, similar project that was done in, uh, Pompano Beach. That I want to talk to the, the, uh, uh, Public Safety and Traffic Board and as well the, the, uh, Drainage and Infrastructure Board. To do a field trip up there once the, you know, once we have light in the evening, uh, once it's a little more towards summer. To see this one. And there's another one underway in Fort Lauderdale right now. One at Miramar just wasn't publicized. It was successful. The people from Miramar that were there said. It was a great idea. They don't know why it didn't follow on. Well, Pompano picked up the idea and as well now Fort Lauderdale's doing it, so. I'm not suggesting we start painting all of our roads to slow people down, but I know we have some real hotspots around town that this may be, uh, you know, a. Relatively inexpensive, safe solution rather than trying to, you know. I I believe white, but I don't know all the details. They're gonna do, because there was so much interest at this meeting, they're probably gonna do a presentation next month. So, don't know. Not black. I'm, I'm guessing it's some sort of contrast that tells your mind that. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so. So I believe. That's what I had on my list. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, David Kozinski, uh, District Four. Um, you know, uh, when you guys were talking about the, uh, area one ninety ninth and two oh two. Fiftieth, I, I went out there myself too, um, on Sunday and, uh, spoke to a resident in the area. And I noticed in the swell how certain parts of the swell would go up and down and. And it doesn't look like there was any way that water would flow. It was just like a, a water collection area and I'm looking at. Um, we get into our rainy season, it looks a habit, habitat for mosquitoes. Um, and, yeah, and a lot of this drainage that has been going on and I'm thinking. Didn't, uh, Rod and Emily just get the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a stormwater, uh, master plan? And if that can somehow give us some guidance in what, um. The overall layout of drainage should be, especially for the western part of the town, because, you know, Sunshine Ranch is pretty much handled for the most part. But definitely the western part of the town, um, it's something that I would, I would really like to see. Push forward with the stormwater master plan and how it's gonna be implemented. Um, I don't, I guess maybe we may be redoing some of this. I hope not, but it may be necessary in certain little areas. Um. And, uh, as for the roads, we gotta remember that, um, this money that we're spending is, um, not just money that was given to us. This is our share of the penny gas tax and came down from Broward County. And so. While it may be money from Broward County, this is our share. This is our taxpayers' money is the way I look at it. We still need to be very diligent in the way that we're spending this. Um, as for the, uh, the grass issue, the seventy five dollars thing, I think that would be a really, really good, good idea. For, so then we can go back and I would support something like that if it brings, if it comes up, uh, for a vote. Um. Let's see, um, I did clear up the issue. There's a couple of guardrails in Sunshine Ranches that are damaged from motor vehicles. Uh, those are in the process of being, uh, fixed, repaired, brought up. There's a one on volunteer. There's a one on Hancock and there's a real bad one at, uh, Holatine Sterling. Um. See, going through, going through. Okay, um, now, as to the, um. The bridge at one eighty fourth and, uh, Bonaventure. Just, it was just very interesting that you, you bring this up, Noel. Um, cause earlier this week I was invited to a. The social, uh, networking, social, um, I think it was Thursday morning. And two of the commission members from Weston were there and the mayor. And I approached the council members or the commission members, hey, what do you think about this, uh, making a way for the horses to go through? And, um. Then, um, they both deferred to the mayor. So mayor was busy and I hung around and hung around until it was almost empty and I said. Okay, Mayor Peggy, I got something and I hope it's not going to be something that's gonna, uh. Create, um, like a groundbreaking venture that's gonna cost us a big time, big time issue. And I said, is there a way that we can have a dedicated horse lane across that bridge? And I went through the details, you know, that the bridge is owned by Broward, uh, Broward County. The city line for Weston is right at the edge of the fence of the school. And basically that, that land is all within the town of Southwest Ranches except for the, the lines on the bridge. And, um, she looks at me, she goes, I don't see a problem with it. So, uh, once I confirmed all of this, um, I spoke with Andy and it looks like, um, this is gonna, we're gonna move forward with this. And we actually may be having a dedicated horse trail across that bridge. And that's gonna be really great for our residents who. Uh, get a, um, get a, get a. get a safety for the ride of horses across that bridge and be able to access both sides of C11. So, um, it was, it was really, really good stuff and I'm really, really happy that this, we can do it with the current administration over in Weston.
Awesome. Good.
Good first step, David.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's excellent.
Thank you, thank you. That wraps me up.
Steve, I only have about an hour and a half worth of stuff, so I will be quick, okay?
Do we have a vote to extend the meeting? Cause Jim's gonna say.
Yes, right. I don't see Ms., uh, Dee Schroeder here, but I will address her two questions. I was part of the contingent, uh, that went up to Tallahassee for Broward Day. Our entire council went. We met with the representatives that represent this area of Southwest Ranches and spoke to them and, and told them our concerns about a lot of the different bills that were up there. What'll be accomplished, I have no idea. We keep a constant lookout. Andy is constantly updating us on what the votes are, what committees are saying. And, uh, I am proud to say that our entire, like I said, council was there. We were the only municipality that I know of from Broward County that had the entire council there. So a number of representatives from the Broward League of Cities, they're also fighting like we are to establish home rule. It seems like Tallahassee wants to introduce a lot of rules that, um, take away our rights as, as a small town and a community. And that's being fought real hard. And also, Ms. Schroeder, the Safety and Traffic Committee had their first meeting. I'd love for everybody to attend, come see what's happening. Talk about speeding. We're talking about, uh, different ideas to prevent, uh, cars being stolen. Ideal ways to keep the fob out of the car. That's a great way. But please come, uh, to the meetings and the more participation we have from residents, the better it'll be. The drainage in Green Meadows, we're on our third project. We started over on Dykes and we've worked our way all the way over to 164th. I know a lot of the people were upset. They say they weren't properly noticed and I understand that to get the notice out is difficult. They have driveways tore up. They have yards tore up, the same as out on, uh, the Country Estates area. But I believe that when it's done, I believe that the way it's been explained to me from our engineer, it will be beneficial to help water, uh, move away. So, you know, I'm looking forward to that and, uh, and, you know, just asking people to, to please be patient if they would. I'm sorry to hear that, uh, people's animals are being killed by either the dogs or coyotes or whatever. I'm sorry to hear that. I was able to donate some material that I had to a couple of people out in Rolling Oaks to put up around their chicken coops and around their, uh, fences to keep the, the animals out. But you do have to protect those animals yourself. It's, you know, they're not gonna be able to protect themselves. So if anybody has any questions, please call me. Please reach out, say hi. Any complaints that you have, I'm here. Just, just give me a call. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. All right, um, I'll try and move through the items pretty quickly. A number of them have already been, been addressed through the councils. So I'll skip over those. Uh, bulk pickup. So bulk pickup, just a couple of thoughts on that. We, the illegal dumping is definitely becoming more and more of a problem. And, um, I just wanna kind of reiterate the proper way to handle that. If you see illegal dumping in, you know, in your, in your neighborhood, in your area of town, what you wanna do is you wanna call Davy PD, just call in the non-emergency number and, um, report that as illegal dumping. That will then come to the town and the town will ensure that it gets picked up and taken care of at no cost to the resident. So please, please don't, you know, don't endure looking at it for, for weeks or months. Please just make the call to Davy PD so that they do the police report and then they will contact the town and the town will make sure that it gets picked up. One of the issues along those same lines is, um, we're seeing more and more where, um, the truck that does the bulk pickup is skipping over areas. And that is, um, it's frustrating. Let's just put it that way. It's frustrating. A lot of times there is a reason for that. I've seen it where there is, you know, there was some debris there and there was some dirt mixed in there. And so they skip it because of the dirt. I've seen it where, um, they see someone other than the resident drop some of the debris there. And so then they, they designate that as a, um, non-resident, um, pile of bulk and they skip over the whole thing. I've seen it where there is some construction items in there and they're saying that's not for us to pick up and they skip over the whole thing. It's really frustrating. Um, it didn't used to be that way. It used to be that, um, kind of the, uh, if there was, it went in doubt, they would, they would lean the way of the resident. And, um, we're not seeing that anymore. I, I, you know, it's, it's frustrating. And it's definitely, as we said earlier, it's some of the things that we're gonna definitely look into for the contract for the coming year. When we, when we do a new contract in, uh, in September and new vendor or the same vendor, but I think probably a new vendor to be honest. Those are things we're gonna be looking at. Another thing, while I'm, while it's on my mind, I wanna make sure that, uh, Andy, it's on the record is, um, one of the things that has never made any sense to me, and I definitely wanna see it changed in the next contract, is this whole thing where if, if I, if I'm doing the yard work on my yard, which, and this is not for my benefit because I actually enjoy doing it. I do all the yard work. It does, not, that's the best looking yard in the community. I get that, but I like to do it all myself. But if I do the yard work and I put all the debris out there, that's okay. If I pay somebody to do the exact same work on the exact same piece of property and they put it out there, all of a sudden, it's not okay for bulk pickup to pick it up. Makes zero sense to me. Zero sense.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
And we have a lot of residents in town that frankly grew up here and used to do it all themselves. You know, in, in 20 years, I'm not gonna be able to, to do it all myself. I'm gonna be paying somebody to do it, you know? And what difference does it really make whether I did it or I paid somebody else? So that, that needs to come out. That's, that's just, it makes no logical sense. So I think that was all the items as far as, as bulk that, that, uh, were there. Just to address a couple of things, appreciate Dee's comments. It was, you know, the, the trips up to Tallahassee, it's been this way, you know, I've been doing this for, for almost 20 years. And the trips up to Tallahassee are always very, very similar, um, in that you have some great meetings. And then you have a lot of downtime in between the great meetings, you know? And so it's a little frustrating sometimes because you wanna, you wanna be busy. You know, there's a lot of folks to talk to. You try and talk to as many as you can and, um, um, but you don't, you know, you're not, you're not busy the whole time. But it's, it, it makes sense. In the long run, you make some good connections. You have some good conversations. You push, push some items forward that otherwise wouldn't get pushed forward. You build some relationships for the future and things, conversations you're gonna have in the future. So it's good. We met with, uh, the, the representatives, as, as Jim said, the representatives of our area, um, Bartleman. And, and we met with our representatives. We met, I met with a couple of county commissioners, which is always good to build those relationships. And then just a lot of folks from Broward League and, and other folks that, uh, um, are there. So it was, it was a good meeting. Uh, it was a good event. It was a good trip. You know, I always wish we could do more, um, but, uh, but it is what it is. It's kind of the nature of the beast. We also, um, we pushed forward. I think we were very successful in getting more attention towards some of the appropriations that we're looking for. That was one of the things that I thought went really well when we were up there. We had some really good conversations. Some of the legislation we were looking for, unfortunately, um, it was, you know, sometimes you're talking about legislation that, um, could go either way and you're, you're trying to, trying to push the ball forward to make it happen. Unfortunately, we've got a couple of items like with the fireworks bill that it's, it's just a hard stop. And it ain't, it's not gonna go. And so we're gonna have to get creative for next year and we're already talking about ways to do that. Um, so, but it was a good trip. I'm not sure exactly the comment, uh, related to, to the speed limit. And I apologize, I don't see Dee here, but not sure exactly what that was related to. We do have one speed limit, uh, 25 miles an hour throughout town. There are a couple of streets, a few streets, not a couple, but a few streets, um, like Mathers is a good example, where that is not the speed limit because it, it has more traffic, so it's a higher, higher speed limit there. But I think we have a pretty uniform speed limit throughout town. So, um, I think that's in good shape. Maybe I'm missing something. If I am, I would welcome more, more feedback on that. And then, uh, another thing, there was to talk about the, the, uh, the cameras. Uh, just to be clear on the cameras, the cameras are not video cameras that, that shoot like, uh, what's going on on the street. It's, it's, it's license plate readers. And so, um, so they're faced the direction that they are specifically to read license plates and to be able to, um, identify, um, serious offenders that might be coming into our community and be up to no good. Also, the price was significantly lower than what was thrown out there, but I won't go into that. Let's see, uh, Farmer's Market, just a quick update on that. I am super duper excited. I'm hearing lots of good stuff on that and, um, looking forward to seeing that come to fruition here this spring. Another shout out to George and, uh, Astronite Foundation. Just the, the tremendous amount of work that went into the carnival that not only made it a, a success of the carnival, but really, uh, no pun intended, paved the way to, uh, to get a lot of other events in there as well. So, so that's, that's fantastic. Um, and then there's two items that I wanna get a consensus on or a vote. Keith, I'm not sure which, which we need, but I'll, I'll bring them up one at a time. Gary brought up a great recommendation about, uh, what we wanna do for naming that area there. I think we just got a consensus of the council on that. I, uh, I would, to me, I would send it to the Parks Board. But my recommendation for the Parks Board would be to do, let the residents choose it. But I would go to the Parks Board to make that decision, kind of. That's, that's my thought.
I agree.
Are we good with that? Jim, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Excuse me. Put it in the newsletter or see which way the Parks Board wants to go with it. If they wanna do a contest or they just, they wanna do it amongst themselves.
Yeah, if they're super comfortable themselves, I'm okay with that too.
Yeah. I mean, there's only so many words there.
Right.
That'll fit.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we can, I think we can move forward with that. Um, and then the last thing was I wanted to, and we may need a vote for this, is the, uh, the $75. I'd like to propose, let me just restate that again to make sure that we're all comfortable with that. So, um, when we go into the project, if someone, um, is comfortable with Bahia, it's exactly the way it is. If they are not comfortable with Bahia and they would really prefer to have St. Augustine, then it would be, then they would inform us of that. We would not lay the Bahia down on that property. They, they would get a $75, they would go out and buy the St. Augustine, the pallet of St. Augustine, or two pallets, whatever they needed. They would buy that themselves. The town would reimburse them $75 per pallet, um, cause some properties are bigger than others. And if the pallet was there when the contractor was laying the sod, then the contractor would lay their sod, the St. Augustine, rather than the Bahia. If the St. Augustine is not there at that time, then it's gonna be up to the resident to lay that by themselves. The contract, I don't know if we can expect the contractor to come out over and over again. So that's, that's proposal. I see Andy's hand up. He's probably gonna correct me on something when it's.
The only, yeah, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I wanted to tag on that is, as you all know, St. Augustine requires greater irrigation. The resident would be responsible for that, not the town.
And, and I believe that's the way it is right now, even with the Bahia, right? The resident is responsible. So there's not, but, but to be clear, whichever is laid out there, the resident is responsible.
How do they choose? How do you envision them having an option or a choice?
Yeah, and that comes back to what I was saying earlier about the communication upfront, that we need to have that, this all communicated well upfront. And, um, I would leave it to Andy to determine the mechanics of it, whether we, you know, send out a, a, a letter or, or yeah, postcard or something like that. But at, at any rate, we would, we wanna make sure that this is spelled out well ahead of time and have the different options.
I think that's been one of our bigger challenges and that's the feedback we keep getting. We didn't know. You know, COVID's gone or going away. So, you know, hopefully those things are behind us.
Absolutely.
Steve, is this, uh, something that the contractor is gonna agree to? To lay the St. Augustine instead of the Bahia? If the St. Augustine's there or it wouldn't make a difference to him one way or the other?
Well, it would definitely, no, no, you're, you're right. It would, it would definitely be something that we would have to put into future projects and, and have them agree to. But I don't, if it's there, I would hope that that would not be a, a huge stumbling block.
I mean, I've seen this done before. You just give the contractor a line item on that and they bill back to us based on an agreed upon rate, how much of whichever they use. That, that's what we do when we tie it up.
Well, but remember, in this case, they're laying sod either way. And the resident, the resident is buying
Right.
the sod if it's not there. So, so it's either the sod is, either the sod is there and, and they lay it or.
Oh, so you're suggesting that the, the resident actually bring in the sod. They buy it from one of the local companies and it's waiting for the contractor to come in and lay.
Exactly.
That's simple.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah. Good.
Steve, do they know, would they be able to tell the resident when they're coming through to lay the sod?
We would need to. We would need to.
Yeah, yeah, because you can't let that sod stay on that pallet for a long, you know, period of time.
And we know, you know, we know. I mean, obviously it could, they could have a day scheduled and it could be a bad rainstorm or something like that and it gets delayed. But, uh, generally speaking, we know when that's gonna happen.
Okay.
Mayor, I have, uh, several just questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is implemented the way you want. I think it was Andy who, who said that the St. Augustine requires irrigation or it dies. Are you requiring as part of it that the resident have irrigation for that or we don't care if it dies?
It, well, I don't wanna say that I don't care, but I'm just saying that it's, it's either way, it's the resident's responsibility to maintain that, that, that grass.
Okay, um, we may have to amend the code to make that clear. Because if not, you would not be able to go back after the resident if they fail to maintain that grass.
I don't wanna go after the resident. If, if they fail to maintain it, it's their yard.
But, but it's our swale.
I, I don't wanna go after them. I would never go after them.
Okay. So, um, so the residents, and this is all for future projects, not current projects.
So in, in prior projects, I wanna be fair to future and prior. So in prior projects, obviously we can't lay the sod for them. But if somebody has gone out there and put, replaced the, what we put down there with their own, then yeah, I, I would wanna provide them the $75 per pallet back for them as well.
Mayor, may I jump in?
Yeah.
I'd like, while I appreciate the subject matter, I would appreciate if you all maybe deferred this tonight and not tried to establish that policy and maybe take that to the Drainage Board. Because if Rod Lay is gonna be the one responsible for this and to make it happen, he should be part of the discussion. Cause he may have concerns or suggestions that, that might better benefit this.
Okay. Well, yeah, all right, but I don't wanna cut it off. Let's talk it through.
No, that's fine.
Okay. So, um, that being said, you're gonna wanna put conditions in there like, uh, proof of how many pallets, et cetera, you'll want.
Bring in the receipts.
Right, an invoice or something of that nature. Since there's no doubt that's gonna require a budget amendment as far as where the funds are coming for, uh, or from. Marty, how, how do you do this? Is it a, we'll have to do a resolution, but you don't know how much money yet the town's gonna be expending, do we?
Well, we don't know how much, but I don't know also, I mean, there, we may need a, we may need an end of year budget.
That's correct, Mayor. That what I was gonna suggest, what the mayor is advising. We could handle it year end, uh, play it on a case by case basis, depending on, on the needs. As part of the year end budget adjustment, uh, we, we would track it. We can provide you with updates in the monthly, uh, town administrator reports, uh, of, of what's incurred. So you'd be prepared, uh, for the amount, uh, in that regard. But, uh, ultimately it would require some adjustment. And then we determine where to take it from, either general fund or the transportation fund. We'll see what's available or, uh, remember you have the Tisdor contingency of reserves set aside. So, uh, we could determine that later, uh, and we'll keep you advised of the amounts as you go.
I don't anticipate this to be a huge number.
Can I just throw something out there as well? I mean, somebody presenting a risk. Can I just throw something out there as well? I mean, somebody presenting a receipt, we probably need to put some guardrails around it because, uh, I'm aware on 188th, a couple of people took the opportunity to re-sod their front yard around their driveways, et cetera. So if they come to us with a receipt for twenty pallets of sod.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but Rod or somebody needs to validate to, to put some sanity tests on it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
I know. I've already, we've already gone back and, back and forth and Rod is out, but he still is active. He's an amazing guy.
Yeah.
Um, and talked about, about, you know, how, how, how much one pallet will cover. And so we have an idea of what is reasonable.
Mayor, I have a suggestion on that.
Yeah.
Um, instead of requiring residents now to find receipts and everything like that, we, i- if they replace the sod, we can, we'll know, you know, because it looks different.
Yeah.
And then we can just do, uh, an aerial takeoff and, and know exactly how much it is.
Even better.
It's easier.
Yep, it is.
All right. I think this should be part of a resolution after the drainage board, uh, decides. And then, uh, we'll bring it back to the council with the official policies that it's in there. Okay.
One item that concerns me is the, the scope of the project. Um, I don't know what we're talking about. We're talking about a couple of dozen properties? Are we talking forty, fifty, a hundred? Um, are we talking people who took the Bahia, but now realize they could have gotten a credit? Do they want to retro it and buy sod and strip out the Bahia? I mean, I see the idea is good, but I see, you know, I see further problems, not problems, but situations down the line that we may not have anticipated, you know? Because if I, if I was somebody like that and it was in the front of my, in mind and I didn't take advantage of it and Joe, Joe Blow across the street did, and now the, the town's paying him, um, you know, for something he chose, I, I'd be pretty upset, you know?
Well, I guess, I guess.
But I'm not disagreeing.
No, 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 no. It's a, it's a great point. It's a valid point. And I guess what I would say, you know, um, we need, those are the things we need to work through. It's a great point. Um, to me, at the end of the day, if somebody, I mean, my, my inclination is, it's, it's for the folks that have already done it, not, not, not for, if it's a project that's closed and now somebody wants to swap out into, that's not, that's not what this is about. But I would say that even in that situation, um, a pallet of St. Augustine is probably, I don't know, it, it's, it varies. Like, as I drive up Griffin Road, it goes anywhere from a hundred and sixty bucks to like three hundred bucks.
Yeah. Four hundred square feet.
But, you know, so if you're going to spend two hundred and fifty dollars and the town's going to give you back seventy-five bucks, you're still laying it. It's not, it's not like we're giving it to you for free. So.
Yeah. No, I get it. I, I agree with you. I just, I just would like to see the parameters.
Yep.
You know, on something like that.
I think bringing it back to the drainage board is a great idea.
Yeah.
Hash all this out.
Let them, let them.
Yeah.
As professionals look at it.
Yeah. And frankly, um, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not throwing stones because I was there and I, I listened to the debate and I think they came up with the right answer. But it was them that, that also debated the whole Bahia in the first place and they, they looked at it very logically and, you know, and very carefully and, um, looked at, you know, the fact that these projects are done in the dry season and putting Bahia in there is something that makes sense. It's going to last. It's going to, it's going to, it's going to be much more successful.
We debated that like two or three times.
Yeah.
Recall. It was several, it was several times.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I think they certainly, they did a great job, but it makes sense to bring it back to them since they made this, you know, they, they made the recommendation. All right. Any other comments on this? Okay. I'm going to open it up just because I, I know there's, there's a number of folks that have input on this. And so I'd like to hear what they have to say on this topic.
I, I just want to make a comment on Tallahassee after. I mean, I don't have to do it right now. So.
Okay. Yeah, let's, let's.
Save a marker out there.
Yeah.
Hi. Good evening. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. Just so happens, um, with regards, and it sounds good. I mean, I'm not disputing what you're saying. I think it's a great idea and concept. Um, with respect to, uh, pallet of sod is about five hundred square foot. If the average swale is fifteen foot, you'll get a linear feet of thirty-three foot. If an average property is a hundred and twenty-five foot, you're looking over four pallets per house at three hundred dollar cost. So I don't know what the cost is, but it could certainly skyrocket. I mean, we should definitely take it back to the Drainage Board. I'm open to take up that subject and, and worked for some sort of resolution because, you know, if it was my house, yeah, I wouldn't like it either.
Right.
So, you know, I am in agreeance with, with, you know, finding some sort of solution and compromise.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, George.
You were talking about the funding. New Holly's worth a hundred ninety-nine thousand. You were talking about the how to fund it. Well, there's the hundred thousand dollars that is put into the drainage and infrastructure every year. And it is my understanding, after speaking to George, that he does not believe that has been allocated already. So you do have funding that is available, I believe, which is the hundred thousand dollars. And I think that would be enough to get a very good start as to what, you know, you want to do or what needs to be done, uh, to areas that have been done right now and working backwards and making sure that it goes forward in a manner that is good for the residents. So, uh, there is a funding source, I believe, that is available at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
I can just share with you all. So in front of our house, it was two pallets and fifteen squares.
All right.
That's what it was. And it was like five hundred and forty dollars, but we had credit at the landscaper over there.
Nice.
From our barn dance win at one of the silent auctions. So we, but, um, also, w- if they go ahead and do this, um, as far as the watering or not the, I don't know if that's part of the irrigation, but the watering of it. So we did get our own sod. The watering truck came by, however, whatever days it did in the beginning, it passed our house, backed up in our driveway, but it didn't water our grass. It, they put it down, but they never watered it after. So, which was fine. Like, I texted Rod. I'm like, well, unless they're putting something other than just water, I don't know why they're passing the house, but that's okay. We'll, we'll water ourselves. But if you do go this route where.
Yeah.
They are, then, wh- whether, whether it's this sod or that sod, that they, that that's part of, part of what they do is then they're going to water all the.
Right.
Houses.
Perfect. Thank you.
David Sears, Hundred and Thirtieth Avenue. I hate to beat a dead horse. You're saying that it's about a hundred dollars for Bahia grass that we're paying for a pallet of Bahia? Okay, roughly, that's about what it is. Whatever we pay for it, you're going to give the residents back seventy-five dollars. If I still lived on two oh one, I'd be up here and I'd be going crazy, but I don't anymore. You know, think about it this way. You're going to, you're going to pay residents back, you've already pissed them off because you're doing a swale in their yard. All the houses in Southwest Ranches were built there. I know, I, I talk to Mr. Weekly all the time and he's like, these roads were paved when he was a child. Just pave over them and you don't have to redo the swales and you don't have to do all this stuff for drainage. These roads aren't coming up because of water intrusion. These roads are, are being the way they are because they haven't been paved in fifty years. So, I mean, some cases, yeah, the water might go there, but if you go down two oh one terrace, that's worse than what it was when you guys started it. And then you have houses that have it and houses that don't because they have stuff planted there. People planted that stuff there so nobody did anything like this. Just pave over it and move on. It's savings to the town and we can pave more roads. Doing these swales is, it's becoming a waste of money and it's making you guys all look bad. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but think about it. It's, it's, you guys, we spent a half an hour talking about this. If we just pave it and we don't mess with it, not going to piss off the residents. They're going to be happy that the roads are done. You know what I mean? Thank you.
Thanks. I, I appreciate the comment. Um, the reality is, is that when the vast majority of those roads were put in, there was a swale there originally. And the only reason why those roads are, have lasted as long as they are is because there was a swale there. It took the water off the roads. Now, some places it's worse, some places it's, it's better. There are places over on 188th, um, and 185th where when it rained, it was totally underwater because the swales had gotten so out of, in reverse. It was like, it was like a canal in the middle of the road. And those, those particular areas, the road, there was no road left. And so if we did not do this maintenance on the swales, all the roads would eventually get to that point. Some, some of the roads need it right now, um, but if we don't do it now, we won't be back for another thirty years or fifty years or whatever. And think about what that swale is going to look like in another fifty years of buildup. It's going to be, it's going to be a disaster. It's going to be a canal. And so, yeah, it's, it's not good. And, and yeah, the, the council's taken a lot of heat for it, but it's, it's necessary. It's part of the engineering of a road to make sure that it lasts for as long as we need it to last. Um, and it would be easy for me to say, you know what? Let's just not mess with it because it's making residents mad. But I'm trying to think beyond the, you know, the residents are right here. I'm trying to look twenty-five, thirty years down the road. And, um, and it's, it's important, it's important that we do it right. It's important that we have a way for the water to get off the road, um, so that the roads last. Um, what else? Anything? Are we done? Are we good with that?
That issue, yes.
All right. All right. I think I still had, uh, no, I think I'm done. I think I'm good.
Mr. Mayor.
It was my last topic.
I, I did have one issue you had brought up earlier, um, regarding the bulk waste and how, um, the trucks, uh, the driver misses, skips over a pile. Um, and, and this is just a suggestion that came to mind as you were discussing it. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm like one of these people that likes to have accountability as I go through, uh, my work. Um, maybe, and, and this is just a suggestion, that a, a term be put in the contract that whoever is running the truck for the bulk would have a check sheet over each property. And if the property is skipped over, there is an excuse pr- uh, put in there. And then the town can make a request, uh, if a property is missed and, uh, it gets delivered to Andy and say, okay, this is the reason that that property was, um, missed and he would already have it.
Right.
That's just a suggestion. It's just something that came to mind.
I thought they already did that. Didn't, Andy, don't they have that GPS mapping feature that they do that with?
They, they, they do. There, there's a GPS mapping which shows some of the piles and, and some of those different issues that they run into. Uh, oftentimes we got to go back and when we get complaints from residents for they were missed for some reason, we had one that was brought to my attention today that had been missed on Palomino. And when we went back and looked at it, we discovered there were things over, over length. There were black bags full of trash that needed to be sorted through. And so the resident was, was, it was brought to their attention. They made some changes and then Waste Pro went back and, and, and cleaned that up. So often, and I, 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 I'm not about to sit here and defend Waste Pro. Don't, don't take this the wrong way. But a lot of times, there are circumstances that are reasons why something might get skipped. Doesn't mean that that's always appropriate, always correct. Again, I'm not trying to defend it, but I'll just say that, that there are times where the circumstances are correct. But we, we need to get those, those answers. Need to come back to us and better reporting.
Yeah, this, this is, this is a constant problem and.
It is.
And, and we, in the very beginning of the contract, I remember looking at the, the, not a GPS maps that they were sending us of where the trucks were going and, and, you know, then COVID hit and everything.
As long, as long as we're touching base on this, this was something that was going to be on my report, but I'll, just because it's timely now. At last council meeting, you all awarded the contract for a consultant to help us with our, with our con, with our, drafting our scope of services for the next bid. Uh, that consultant will be at our next council meeting in two weeks. So you'll have an opportunity. I'll give you, tee it up now. You'll all have the opportunity to think through some of those things that, that you may want to share, uh, from your position here on the dais. And we're also working to set up a, a couple hour workshop the following Saturday after that. So the consultant will be here on two twenty-four, February twenty-fourth. On two twenty-six, on Saturday, we're looking at setting up, uh, a couple hour session with a consultant here in council chambers that will promote to residents. They come in and share their concerns as well. Thank you.
Bob, did you have?
Yeah. I wanted to talk a little bit about Tallahassee since we can do that here. Yeah. So this was my second trip up there. The first time I'd gone up, I'd gone up with Dee and Doug and their spouses. And the real big difference between this trip and that trip was Tallahassee was a ghost town. I mean, we're walking right down the main street between the, the Capitol Building and where we were staying, literally right down the middle of the street because there were no cars. It was a total ghost town. But one of the significant things that, that came up, we met with our representative from Southern Strategies or one of the, now the Southern Group, right?
Southern Group.
And we were kind of frustrated that we couldn't see more people. Steve's right. There was some downtime there that, uh, I think we all felt that we could have made better use of the time if, if we could have planned things a little differently. And the recommendation is we don't go to Broward Week every year. We basically, or Broward Days, we basically coordinate some time with our representative, our two elected representatives and the committee chairs that they think we need to see. So we may go a week or a month before Broward Days or whenever, whenever there's a good time where there isn't a, name the county days, uh, that, that they're all running around. I mean, once you go in the Capitol Building, it's a madhouse because there's so many people from Broward. I think there were two or three hundred representatives from Broward there. It was crazy. So, you know, the recommendation is to, uh, for us to go up, to meet with these folks and really talk about our desires. But then we don't want to not be at Broward Days. So we send the mayor or the vice mayor, since the vice mayor rotates, you know, whatever we decide as, as a council to do, uh, to, to have some representation, not to just go for the sake of, because as, as Steve had said, uh, we all met with people that we thought would be helpful for our cause. And it, it, it's really funny when you get these people, you, you start that button holding, you know, we really need this. The town is really counting on and just fill in the blanks. So, um, there, there's definitely benefit to the Broward Days aspect of it, but I think it would be more beneficial and we could be more effective if we could go up at a time where the right representatives for our needs are available.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. That's a, it was, uh, it's a great recommendation. It was something we discussed with the, our lobbyists when we were up there because there's like, you, you, we, we can make this more effective, um, maybe if we schedule a little differently. So it's, thanks for bringing that back up. All right. Uh, believe it or not, I believe the council member comments are finally over. Um, legal, right?
I, I'm not, I'm not going to have comment here tonight. I, but the one thing I would just say to, um, Councilmember Hartman's comment, uh, because I did, I was speak to Southern about it afterward and Nelson and others. You can do both of what you're suggesting by simply going up a day or two before Broward Days. And then you beat the rush. You see whoever you, you see, you overlap Broward Days maybe one day to say hi to the Broward officials and then you get out of there. So there is a way of showing support and, and just, the goal is not to go up with all the Broward officials. So if you go up one or two days before them, you can accomplish that goal. So I just want to mention that.
Yeah. Two day trip is more than ideal. I mean, three days, I, 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 I know that one or two guys stayed a little longer, but I was good to go after two days. Well, everybody from Broward going home. Yeah. That's it. All right. Thank you. Administrative comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I actually had a few things on my list, but I think you all covered it. I think you did a good job and, uh, in the interest of time, we can move on.
All right. Thank you, Andy. All right. Item number ten, please.
Item number ten is an ordinance to the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article Ten, entitled Definition, Section Zero Ten Dash Zero Three Zero, Terms Defined, to amend the meaning of the term Flag Plot, amending Article Fifteen, General Provisions, Section Zero One Five Dash One Ten, Flag Plots, to revise the standards for flag plots and providing for lots made non-conforming by this ordinance, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Uh, this has gone before the, uh, comp board and come to us. Um, is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, public discussion closed. If we could please call the roll.
Certainly. Mayor, Councilmember Albritton? Yes. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eleven?
Item number eleven is an ordinance to the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article One Fifteen, Plating and Subdivision of Land, Division One, Plating, Plating and subdivision, uh, I'm sorry, Plating Sections, uh, One Fifteen Dash Zero One Zero, Applicability and Division Two, Waiver of Platt, Section One Fifteen Point, I'm sorry, One Fifteen Dash Zero Seven Zero, Purpose, to restrict the use of the waiver of plaid process for subdivision and make changes of a housekeeping nature, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for, um, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Missed a line.
Is this the one you wanted to talk about, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, before we make the motion. Um, so, yeah, similar to what I said, uh.
Don't we need the motion before we discuss?
Well, we may want to amend the motion.
Okay.
So just saving.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't ju- I didn't jump in there on purpose.
Technically, you are correct.
Still trying to get it straight after.
No, no, technically. No, no, technically you are correct. We're taking a little bit of liberty here.
Make a motion without the mayor speak.
Thank you. Um, all right, so I, I, you know, had some conversations on this, but frankly, I've, I've given it a lot of thought as well, trying to come out with the intent of what it is and to be comfortable with it, that, um, and, and my, you know, we, we had a, we had a um, a good ordinance here. I was uncomfortable with it just from the standpoint that um, I felt like residents that had been here um, for a long time. I'm picking an arbitrary number, 20 years, but have been here a long time. Um, they paid their dues. They, they did, they're not, they're not an individual that is flipping the property. You know, if, if, if you're waiting 20 years to flip the property, you are the most patient property flipper I've ever seen in my life. Um, so now, not to say that after 20 years that they may not be selling the property to somebody else, but it's, I, I can't call that flipping the property. So I, 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 I think the 20 years makes sense. It's specifically tailored for those long time residents so that they can take advantage of this savings. They've been paying taxes for 20 years, it's time that the, they, they get a little savings back. Um, so I'm very comfortable with that. With the extra five years, not selling in the future, I, I, I don't know how we would police that. I don't know how we would enforce that. What happens if four and a half years later it gets sold? I mean, are we, what, what are we really gonna do there? Um, and I don't want to put an ordinance in place that's unenforceable. I guess we could enforce it if we wanted to get really nasty about it, but I don't want to go there. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to put myself in that position. I don't know if any of you all do, I don't, but anyhow, I don't want to do it. Um, but aside from that, the mechanics issue of it, I just, I think that if somebody has owned the property for 20 years, um, they've earned the right to sell it, divide it and, and you know, I think most cases they're not gonna sell it. I think most cases, what I've seen come before here is they're dividing it up so that they're, one of their, their children can, can have their own place here in the ranches. Because it's tough, let's face it, it's tough for a young family to buy in the ranches these days. And um, so, so I, I would like to get rid of the five year portion of this um, and retain the rest.
And you, you want to make the five years zero?
Yes, I do.
For, for purpose of the record, Mayor, on page three of four of the uh, ordinance, uh, which is uh, section three.
Yes.
A subsection for paragraph B would be removed in its entirety.
Uh, let me take, I've, I've got it here, let me just take a quick look at it.
Were you at page three or four?
Correct.
Yeah. Section four B, part B.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And uh, letter C would then become letter B.
Right.
So if you temporarily pass the gavel and make that motion, it uh, can be debated.
Oh, yeah, if you're okay.
I'm okay with it.
Are we okay with that?
Uh, I'm okay.
Steve?
Yes.
Uh, real quick, um, this was done so that they could accept the waiver of plat and not have to go through a long process with the accounting, correct?
A long process and a more expensive process.
And a much more expensive process, exactly. Now, I do have a question and I don't mean to throw things out, but if you go to the example above where the RE properties are, why would they have to have three times the size of property to divide that up? You, you've put a restriction on RE, but you haven't put it on anyone else as far as, like, like the RE has
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I get your question.
Okay, so in, in Green Meadows, if I own three lots, I could never subdivide those into one acre properties like it, like it's zoned now through the waiver of plat. I'd have to do a plating. So I'm not sure why, you know, that that's there either. I mean, I, I don't.
Yeah, okay, um, I, I got your question. I'm gonna, um, just for the moment, it's a valid question and I want to, I want, I want to get to it. Um, but I want to separate the five year issue from the three times the size property issue, okay? Can I?
Right.
So are, are you comfortable with the, removing the five, the five years?
Would the five year also apply to those that, for RE, the five year waiver would apply to them also, correct?
We're pulling it out though.
You, you're pulling it out, so you're pulling it out for everybody, not just
Pulling it out for everybody.
For everybody.
Pulling it out for everybody.
All right.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, so I think we're good on that. Um, but Gary, I'm gonna defer to you on the three, because that, that was really your, your proposal.
Yeah. Jeff, could you, um, you, we came up with this formula and he was, he was going through it.
The uh, the intent of it was that um, a, again, when we, when we thought about this, we didn't have the 20 year uh, provision that Steve, that the mayor came up with, okay? But the, the idea was that um, if you're dividing the lot into fewer number of lots than you could by our own regulations, then you're probably not speculating. And that would authorize you to go through the process. If you had, and it doesn't matter what zoning district you're in, it could be the one acre, two acre, it doesn't matter. Um, so if you're in a two acre district and you had five, uh, six acres, which is three times the minimum, um, and you are only dividing it in half and you can't further subdivide it um, after that, um, you know, you're, you're not a speculator because you would have divided it into three in order to do that. And that was the intent of that. Doesn't matter who lives there, it's just, you know, you wouldn't, you, you, you wouldn't do that if your profit was your, your, your driving motive.
Right. But, and, and let me add one thing on to, on to what Jeff said, and Jeff, you correct me if I go astray, please. Um, but if you've lived here 20 years, then the three times does not even apply to you.
Right, it's an either or.
It's an either or.
Yeah.
Uh, if, I own three acres, three one acre tracts next door to me, two, two are empty, uh, you know, and I want to subdivide those, the, these three acres that I've owned in Green Meadows for 20 years. I can do that, that the three time size does not apply to me because I've been here for 20 years?
That's, if you've been here for 20 years, you, then you qualify.
There, there's a little bit of a confusion here because you're talking about one acre lots and three acres. The waiver of plat is only allowed for two lots regardless, okay? Regardless, okay. That's Broward County law. Okay. Cannot change that. Got it. So under no condition can you make three lots under a waiver of plat uh, in, in any zoning category. So you, you're, uh, you know, your um, hypothetical can't come to be
Okay.
at all under a waiver of plat process. It would have to be plotted.
Okay.
And that's where I think Jeff, a little bit of a confusion is. All right. Thank you, I got it now, thank you.
Steve, do you want to make a motion, pass the hour, or you want me?
No, no, I'm good with you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, all right, I'll make a motion that we uh, adopt this with the uh, changes where we've eliminated section four, part B and moved um, C to B.
To B?
To B.
Yeah.
To B.
I second.
We do have a second, okay.
Good.
Um, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, yeah. There's a little more to it than the, the five years because as I mentioned, I think the next day the phone started to ring. And the first person was, why do you, and the word I used earlier was the word I heard from them. Why do you want to penalize people for five years? I didn't think of it quite in that way when we were discussing it. Um, I just looked at it as, oh, it's a requirement that's gonna stop people from flipping, but it, it, it was a very good point because it becomes a penalty at that point, particularly if you have other plans. The second piece is, we're also, in my view, if we stuck with that, taking away somebody's property rights. They can't sell the property for five years. And to me, that's the bigger red flag.
Yeah.
You know, if, if we did go forward, some of those rules they're trying to pass in Tallahassee would probably bite us pretty quickly.
Yeah, well, this is, that's taken off the table now.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, there, there was more to it than just the, the five years and, and the penalty. I mean, I'm more worried about, the penalty's important, but anytime we infringe on property rights, I just, it's a big problem.
You're giving them a, a, it's not, you're not really taking away property rights because it's a voluntary thing, they can always just plat.
Uh, uh, under the law, this would not be taking away someone's property li, rights because they have an, an alternative mechanism.
I see.
The waiver of plat just saves them time and money.
My mistake then.
It's voluntary.
All right, I still think that way. I don't mean erroneously as far as the logic, but I'm always looking at property rights first.
It feels like a penalty, I get, you know, that's why I was, so. So it, that's why I'm so quick to agree to that.
Yeah.
Because I can see it from that, you know, you let things stew in your mind for a while and
Right.
that's why we have two readings.
Yep, yep. And that's why I continue to read the Burt Harris Act continuously. I mean, every time these things pop up, it's like, what can we do by law? So good, thank you, thank you Keith for correction.
Any further comment on this item? Seeing none? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Please uh, call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you. All right, item number 12. Is that where we're at?
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code. Article 140 entitled variances, section 140 dash 020, authority to expand the town council's authority to grant variances. Providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton? Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 13, please.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending all sections of the town of Southwest Ranches Procurement Code codified in the Town's Code of Ordinances, including to modify the purchasing thresholds, bringing the procurement code into conformity with recently enacted two CFR 200 federal regulations, state statutes and Broward County Code to provide authorization for the use of electronic transmissions, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for inclusion in the Town's Code of Ordinances and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I think we have a presentation on this?
Uh, we don't have a presentation, but what we did was printed out the PowerPoint that we did at the last meeting so that you could all have a copy of that.
Great, okay.
But it, with your blessing, Mayor, it's a couple of comments I wanted to make
Please do.
from the last meeting. There were some comments made, I think the, the item that really probably got the most attention was the town administrator's authority and the change in the procurement code. And there were some comments that were made about references to the dark days or the old days in town. And for the sake of the council, for the sake of the residents and, and certainly the taxpaying public, there's some things I wanted, some thoughts I wanted to share with you on that. And, and, and I want to say that change in the town administrator's authority is not particular to me or any future administrator. Uh, what's important to realize is the town has matured tremendously since those early days. Once upon a time, the council hired an administrator, paid him a contract amount to run the town. He hired his own employees that weren't really town employees, they're employees of his. The council at that time was very new. They were learning on the job as they went. The oversight was different than certainly it is now. Uh, it, it's important to recognize how much the town has evolved in, in that time. And so for the sake of, of the public, I just want to assure people that while you have the professional administrator now, I'll assume that, that any future town administrator who served in this position will be an appropriate professional as determined by the town council. But there's more than that. There's additional oversight of the town, town financial administrator who oversees procurement. It's not, one person is not gonna run awry and start spending money without proper oversight. The town financial administrator, while once was an employee of the original town administrator, is now a charter employee that reports to all of you. We have an appropriate procurement person who's trained, who's in place. Now, should I leave, should Morty leave, should Vanessa leave at any point in time, the expectation is that our replacements will be appropriately professional. I will say that you are all far more advanced than that original council was once upon a time. And, and so certainly credit to all of you as, as the town has evolved. The town council in their knowledge and experience has, has uh, has grown as well. And I didn't, I left out one other key part of the oversight and that's legal. So I, 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 I don't want the council or the public to think that a change in this administrator, any future administrator's authority is gonna change things. There are so many checks and balances that are built in that I, I want the public to have confidence that, that things aren't gonna be misspent or handled inappropriately because there, there are too many steps in that process, too many checks and balances. So I just, that was something I wanted to, to get out at the last meeting because that did come up and I understand those concerns over what might have happened in the past. But that's not the world we live in now and that's a credit to the job that this council and past councils have done. But the public should rest assured that that's not a license to do things inappropriately. And I just wanted to share that with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Um, okay, if we can please call the roll. Oh, wait, wait, no, 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 I'm sorry, sorry, yeah. My apologies. Is there any public comment on this item?
The Halliwell's worth 199th Avenue. This is more on the layout and format of the document. Forms change fairly quickly sometimes. And you have all of the forms in the ordinance. Shouldn't the forms be pulled out and be put as a resolution so you can change them in the future? Or change them as the laws change instead of having to pass a new ordinance to change a new form? Also, I was taking a look at some of the new forms that are in there. And the lines put there are fine if you're typing them in. But if you're handwriting them in, you're going to have to write a 16 inch letter to go in that form. So the form design is not applicable for a handwritten form as some of the other forms that you'll take a look that have been used over and over and over again already show where the space is bigger for handwritten. So what I'm asking you to do is those forms that are in there as part of the ordinance be removed and put into a resolution so you can change them easily or make it's an, an addendum that it's put through as a internal administrative function instead of part of the ordinance. And also that the forms be allocated so they could be used as a handwritten form and not a typed only form online. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah, I have a question for Russell, actually. In these types of circumstances, when you have forms, is there a way to describe them as representative forms? Um, and put language in Keith that would allow us to change them at, you know, the discretion of the administrator rather than a council decision?
I, I um, actually appreciate Noel's comment.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, I asked Russell, I said, they're really attached as an exhibit? He said, yeah, so what I would do is just buy every exhibit and, and by way of motion of the council, wherever it says exhibit A, form exhibit A, just write as the town administrator may amend from time to time.
There you go.
And that's all you have to do.
Good.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great observation on Noel, thank you.
Thank you. So do we need to amend what's out there with?
Whatever the motion is, just make
Okay.
a, a motion to approve subject to that amendment.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the, subject to that amendment as stated by legal counsel.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay.
Great, all right. Um, any further public comment? Seeing none? All right, any, any further council comment? Russell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 14, please.
Item number 14 is an ordinance on um, first reading. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code. Article 90 subdivision design and access standards, section 090 dash 080, access to development. To modify standards for certain ingress egress easements, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this is the item that was just heard, uh, just heard 7:00 PM uh, at the LPA. Uh, comes to you with a recommendation of approval. Uh, all, everything from that hearing will be incorporated uh, by reference into this hearing. Um, and uh, Um, and, uh, what I would do, uh, when Councilmember Hartman comes back, is just record his vote, because they already heard the item and the entire debate.
Okay.
So that means I can make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further comment on this item in addition to what we've discussed earlier? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
Come on up, George.
We got to fill some time here, you know?
We're twiddling our thumbs here.
Alright, seeing none.
No pressure, Bob.
Okay, we're, we're good, so call the
It wasn't.
Mayor, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Wait till you see what you voted for.
I know what I voted for. That's why I stopped at the door to hear Russell.
Alright, item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, enacting a zoning in progress pursuant to Section zero zero five dash two four zero of the Town's Unified Land Development Code, to facilitate preparation and enactment of a new rural residential zoning category intended for rezoning non-residentially designated land, directing town staff to defer the acceptance and processing of land use, zoning, and site development applications for residential use on non-residentially designated land for a period not to exceed a period of one hundred and eighty days, or until the town council adopts amended land development regulations, whichever occurs first, authorizing and directing the preparation of a new zoning category that exceeds the requirements of the rural ranches category, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, if I may? Um, this is something I asked to be put on. Um, I definitely want this to go to the Comprehensive Planning Board, and have them hash it out to bring back what a re- a recommendation to us.
Okay.
So, in, in that vein, I, I make a motion to approve this.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, uh, just a question. Um, well, so
Second.
We do have a second. Okay, alright, thank you. If we're sending it to the Com Plan Board, why would we vote on it now?
We're voting on the
Voting on the zoning in progress.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Perfect, got it.
Zoning in progress.
And we have a, we have a starting to stop, I mean, we have
Yeah, I like that.
definite time, you know?
Yeah.
I'm trying to, you know, make a
Minimize it.
nice package out of this.
Yeah.
Alright, so this has given us the six months to study this, to look at it, and
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and hopefully it can be resolved earlier than that.
Right.
Right.
Clearly.
Right, right. Um, I'm, I'm fine with the zoning in progress. I want to be upfront and just give a couple of thoughts that have been going through my mind. And maybe some back and forth, so I can understand it better. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the problem is that we're trying to fix here. Maybe, maybe you could, not, not with the zoning in progress, I, I get that, I'm talking about
No, no, no.
the issue behind it.
Yeah, the issue behind it, okay. There's a, the, the, the RR zoning category is the only one that has two delineations of gross and net acreage, and Jeff, correct, jump in here anytime. Where it's, it could be two net acres or two point five gross acres. This new category would eliminate the two net, and just make, make them equal at two point five. So basically what it does is if we want to use that, th- this doesn't change any existing categories that are in play now. This only is for new residential areas that were formerly CF, or something to that effect. In fact, that's it, CF. Um, this would, it would, I'm going to make sure I say this right, this would decrease the density if we use this as a tool. So, have bigger lots.
Right. Um, and, and
Yeah.
And that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to e- explain a little bit more of the background, because we have time tonight, so i- it's a great night to do it. Um, uh, Councilmember Jablonski, uh, Vice Mayor, excuse me, came up with this notion of, of doing a larger lot. Why? As a lot of the houses of worship are going up on the market, which are currently zoned CF, he, and you can jump in here, but I'm just relating our conversation. He was okay with the notion that they may want to rezone to another category and build residential, while today they're, uh, a house of worship with huge open space. But he felt that he would have to vote no if it came forward on a traditional, uh, two point oh, uh, net zoning category, because he didn't feel that it preserved enough open space for him. So rather, with the five oh vote, he said, what's going to happen is they're all going to get denied, because I can't support a two oh, uh, two point oh, uh, net acreage on some of those properties. So he said that if he created a category which the two point five match net and gross, he could support it, and therefore, that if someone came in for rezoning, he could tell them, or, or the town could tell them, listen, you ha- you have a more likelihood, chance of getting unanimous approval, which is required, by going to RR plus rather than RR. So, to avoid a situation where an applicant comes in for RR, and Councilmember Jablonski is telling you now, Vice Mayor, that I'm not going to be able to support that. So he was trying to create another category for applicants to get approved for what they want to do, rather than getting rejected for what they wanted to do. So hopefully I'm articulating this properly.
That was exactly
So, so
hour conversation.
He, he was not in any way, shape, or form saying, we're going to rezone other people's properties. You know, this, th- this was never used to say that all RR, I'm going to make RR plus. This was only when someone was asking permission of the council to change their, their zoning from CF, commercial, uh, you know, industrial, whatever the case may be, that he wanted to give them an option for a road to success, saying, I will be able to support a two point five net and gross, while I would not be able to support a two point five net, a two point oh net, excuse me. And so, he, all this entire process would do, would be to create a new category, um, that an applicant, i- if they so choose, uh, could rezone to knowing that the Vice Mayor will support that category, rather than rolling the dice. So that was the whole reason behind it.
A question for you about
Yeah, a couple thoughts. So, um, one thought is, you know, we have, we have these, we have these properties all, all over town. What, what's, what's the difference with new properties versus the current properties?
That's my question.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question.
We have RR all over town.
Yeah.
So, what's the difference between
A half an acre.
creating
A half an acre.
No, no, it's the same zoning. I mean
No, but this, if, if we
Depending on the layout of the property, um, they, they may choose to go with the two point five.
They could, but
They could, but they
But most developers will go, I'm thinking large, large parcels, will go for the most, the maximum bang for the buck. And this would preserve more open space. Because I, I don't think the, the animal agricultural reserve thing is going to fly. Um, and I, and I'm, I'm guessing at that, because we have never taken a vote on it. And I think this would preserve more open space in our town.
I, I, one other comment, then I'll, then I'll tell you. So, um, I mean, be- because our town was built on the standard RR, I, I'm, I'm still in search of, of the problem that we're fixing, to be honest with you. I, I don't, I don't see the, yes, it would generate more open space, but we could make it five or ten acres, and that would make even more open space. I don't, I don't, I don't understand the element there. So, uh, you know, to me, to me, it's, it's a good idea, but I mean, there's elements of it that I like, I like more open space, but I'm always leery when we're trying to, when we make a change, and there's, we're looking to fix a problem that I don't even, I don't see the problem.
Well, this is not a, this is not a, something that would be required mandatory. It's just something that I can live with in my capacity up here, if we have to rezone, if any of the CFs are, are commercial or industrial, you know, so, so decide to apply for residential
Right.
properties.
The, the other, the other thing that I think, and we've talked about this on the council over the years a number of times, is, you know, on one side, the RR has this kind of dual nature to it. The two and a half gross, two acres net. But, they're only ten percent buildable. On the other side, the rural estates is the one acre set, but they're twenty percent. So there's a balance there. There's a balance, there's advantages to both. Um, and what we're doing then is we're taking away the advantage of one. And we, I actually think it's fairer the way it is now, because there's advantages to both, whereas if
Well, the, 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 the ten percent would apply to the two point five acres too, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, so
It would be, but that's a limitation, as opposed to twenty percent.
Yeah, but, uh, the, if you're, if you're taking a, a blank sheet of paper, let's just say a p- a parcel,
Mm-hmm.
and you're dividing it out, the minimum lot size under this new category would be two and a half acres.
Correct.
So you're making things less dense.
Mm-hmm.
Just, you know, you, instead of ten, it may be only eight, it may be only
Totally understand that, totally get
That's, that's where I'm going, that's the sole, the sole change, that I'm, that I'm looking for.
Alright, good, thank you.
So where I was going a little further with your question, Steve, initially was, um, and I'm not sure if this is a, a Jeff or a Keith type question, but why would we change, why would you create a new category and not just eliminate the two, two dot zero net from the current RR? Does it throw everybody into non-conforming?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, a hundred percent, that's why we didn't do it that way, was because of the Burt Harris Act, because then almost every property that was two point oh, uh, net would, would not be in conformity.
Okay.
In, in addition to that, and, and one thing the, the mayor said just, uh, to, to point it out, when I, and, and most of you have lived here a long time, Jim has lived here probably longest out of everyone on this commission, this really was never an issue until the last probably five years. Meaning even if you were in the RR category, most people generally had larger than two point five acres. And my, my parents had eight, you know? It wasn't until the property values have gone to where they are, that now you see the carve-up at exactly two point oh, two point oh, and every plat is coming in at two point oh. So, so it is really a recent phenomenon that this has happened, you know, and, 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 you know, and when council, when the Vice Mayor said to me, listen, I'm not going to be able to support, you know, the, these zoning applications which may come forward, you know, I don't want them to get killed completely, what can I do? And we said, okay, well, you know, if you're on the commission and they know that you'd be able to support this category, a developer may say, you know what, I'll, um, I'll still do well, I'm going to rezone to that category. Uh, second part of it, just to understand, is, you know, the que- a question came up in discussion, well, couldn't they then say, you know, or, uh, go to me to RR, um, you know, but don't worry, I'll come back with a site plan, you know, for two point five? It's almost impossible to, to, at that point, you have major legal issues, because their category allows for the two point oh. So, i- i- if the zoning and the site plan went hand in hand, it would have been simple. But since they don't go hand in hand, this was the only way that I could think of to give him what he was looking for. It was basically giving a path to a developer to say, listen, you need five votes on the commission, I'll be able to support this if you come forward, you know, so I want to at least give you the opportunity to come forward.
So, uh, the next question is, we're, we're talking predominantly CF here. Do, does the same scenarios apply if it's A one out west, where, you know, they've got ten acres of A one, and they want to convert it to RR? Is it, is that even doable?
Uh, I, I don't see why somebody would do that, um, because you're not really gaining anything by going to RR. A one and A two have the same, um, net or gross option as, as Rural Ranches does. Um, but, but you wouldn't gain anything by doing that.
Okay. I'm just trying to find reasons to support RR plus.
Yeah, I, you know, we need to hash it out, but
Yeah, I like larger lots.
Keep it, you know, keep, uh, keep us rural.
Yeah.
Keep us, is
Yeah.
Any way we can at the, you know, we're, we're sitting up here at the high altitude level.
Right.
And we need to, you know, put stuff in place that we can use, and we may never have to use it, I don't know, you know?
I like the option.
Yeah, that's, that's
More flexibility, larger lots.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I believe this, this, um, RR plus would be something that, uh, residents whose properties abut uh, certain those, uh, areas that could be transformed into residential, I think those residents will be highly supportive of something like this. And that's why we're here, that the residents are the people that put us up here. And, and that's what I think, um, it would be something that I could support.
Thank you, Dave.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, don't mean to last one to speak, but I, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, we've passed a number of ordinances recently that makes it very difficult for people to subdivide their property, with the easements of the power lines, the drainage issues, all of the, uh, issues that are taking place right of ways, uh, to come up with a two point oh net acres. Uh, and with the two point oh net acres, you've got room to build a barn. And I know that's been a big issue for a long time, having an area to build a barn. You have area on a one acre property. To do two and a half acres, it just, I, I, you're kind of penalizing somebody. I'm not sure who you're penalizing, but you're penalizing somebody.
Developer.
That's, well, is it a developer, or is it, I, I mean
Making it more like
If somebody out, out, if somebody did want to change their property, there's no benefit to it, but if they wanted to change it from A one to RR, uh, wouldn't that punish them out there if they wanted to? I just don't want to punish anybody, I don't want to take away something from people that, we already have it in place where you can put a barn in on two acres, you can put a barn on an acre property, uh, there, there's plenty of open space. This, this doesn't punish anyone, they would have to request it from the town. So if you're A one and want to rezone to RR, which is almost the exact same category, you, you could come forward with the application for rezoning for that category. So it's, this person is going to be applying, or entity is applying to the town to switch their zoning. This is just a zoning change, it has nothing But if they did that, and they were going to put houses there, then we have council that wouldn't approve it, unless it went to RR plus. No, well, A one, A one and RR, as Jeff said, is, it's the same. So they wouldn't do a rezoning, it's the same category, there's no difference in it. The only categories that this potentially would impact are, uh, the commercial categories, the, uh, community facility categories, and our one industrial site. That is it.
Yeah, and just a, a note, we did table the power line, that we took that off the, we took, that was not, you know
That was withdrawn altogether.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, it's an interesting idea, it's an interesting idea, I certainly have an open mind to it, I want to hear more about it, I want to think more about it, um
Yeah, it's nothing we can decide to
Yeah, 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 but I, but I appreciate the discussion tonight, I feel better having hashed it out tonight, that I understand kind of what it's all about.
You know, if, 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 if I was a neighbor around a very large parcel of property that was zoned industrial, commercial, or CF, I would lo- I, I'd like to know that the council's got my back.
Yep.
You know, uh, in this format, that the property behind me isn't going to be cookie cutter, you know, into smaller lots, and stuff like that, and this gives us that flexibility.
Yep.
So thi- this gives us a way to address the neighbors' concerns on the Masters Academy discussions that were going on about a year and a half ago. Just, I'm, I'm just trying to put, frame it.
Well, I will say that, um, that we addressed a lot of those concerns when we passed the ordinance that says that you can only, um, zone to a zone that is the lowest density
Lower density.
that it, that it touches, you know? So, so we, we did cover a huge element of it there, it's forcing, just using that, not that it's targeted for that piece of property, but using that property as an example
Exactly.
that now has to be RR, it cannot be
Yeah, I know, I, and one thing I would recommend, if you have the time to do it, is to go down Rolling Oaks Estates.
I've been there, been there
Just take a drive, they're all two point oh acres.
Yeah.
And you'll look, and the way the houses are placed, and they are beautiful homes.
Right.
Toll Brothers did an outstanding job.
Right.
No ifs, ands, or buts, it's, and, but if you look No ifs, ands, or buts. It's, and, but if you look at it, you would go, hmm, okay, now I see where Gary's coming from.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've seen it.
Wha- wha- one thing, Mayor, that I wanna add is they do go hand in hand with your original ordinance, which is, offers amazing protection for the town. But if you have an enormous site of fifty acre, you know, C F zoned, or a hundred acre, if they sell off half today and it goes to R R plus, if it became a category, and they sell off another half twenty years from now, guess what that has to be under your ordinance?
Right.
R R plus, because it has to go to the least dense.
Yep.
So they, they all do go hand in hand.
Yep.
Thank you.
Awesome.
So I wanna send it to the comp board.
Yeah, good, good discussion.
And let them kick it around for a meeting or two and come back with a recommendation.
Perfect. Yep. I like it. All right, um, any further discussion? Any public discussion on this item? Seeing none. All right, if we can call a question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Step one.
All right, item number sixteen.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the town of Davie's recommendation to prohibit a left turn lane on eastbound Sheridan Street and direct access from the Holman Automotive Group onto Southwest one forty eighth Avenue. Requesting that a copy of this resolution be sent to Senator Yeller, Broward County Highway Construction and Engineering Division, and Secretary O'Reilly in providing an effective date.
Motion approved?
Second.
Awesome. Yeah, I'm, I'm appreciate the support on this. This is, I think, uh, Davie came out with their letter and one of their proposals was right in line with what we're looking for, so we're supporting that, that portion of their letter and sending to Broward County that, you know, we both can support this particular
Excellent idea.
You know?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, appreciate the support on this. Hopefully we'll make some headway.
And the work that was done to get us to that point.
Yeah, yeah, it was good.
It's great.
Andy, thank you for what you've done on this.
All right, any, uh, public comment on this item? Seeing none. If we can please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great.
Okay, super. Item number seventeen.
This is just the budget, a discussion of the budget calendar, the town's proposed budget calendar.
Motion approved?
Motion to approve, second.
Marty, your last budget calendar. What does it feel like, buddy?
Good evening, well, number eleven, uh, this year. Welcome. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, town council members, the public. Um, I have extra copies of the, uh, proposed budget calendar tonight for, to go over. Um, similar in a lot of sense to last year. Today, tonight is your official kickoff uh, as indicated in the yellow. I'm just gonna highlight the yellow. Uh, you have color copies there. I don't know if we can get, uh, uh, Russell or Deborah, uh, on the screen for, uh, memorializing for the, for the people on video. Uh, if you have it on, it would be great, but, uh, if not, we have copies and we'll have this posted in the uh, town hall at all times, and it's in the agenda tonight. The yellow, uh, of course, is tonight, uh, the presentation. Uh, tonight, we're gonna decide all our hearing dates, all our workshop dates, and, uh, all the requirements per Florida statutes and, uh, Broward County Property Appraiser. Uh, we're going to leave a full two months, uh, as we normally do, to have our one-on-ones, input discussion with all of you, uh, on a regular basis. We'll have formal ones, informal ones to get feedback. Uh, we have a lot going on for next year. Um, and Andy's gonna make presentations for ARPA, uh, utilization and funding coming down the road. Uh, so these items will all be brought forward to you as part of the process. We'll be meeting with the advisory boards um, throughout the next three, four months until we get to the first hearing date, uh, which will, uh, we expect to be, have Monday, September twelfth. That's the big date. Uh, between that, um, is our workshop day. Uh, thanks, Russell. Uh, it's now up on the screen. Uh, we're scrolling down. We're at the, uh, fourth yellow mark, which indicates our workshop date of Tuesday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. That'll be, um, and com- all community invited, open forum, uh, presentation. Our needed change in our first council meeting in September uh, is proposed at Monday, September twelfth. Uh, we looked at all the dates. We were even sensitive uh, to our mayor's birthday, and we lucked out this year. Okay, I got a little smile there, and, uh, uh, it's not September fifteenth, so
Yeah.
uh, that was an option, uh, though, so, uh, that was, uh, Andy chose the twelfth. Uh, the main reason is it gives us plenty of time uh, between the first hearing date and the second hearing date, which is Thursday, September twenty-second, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And, um, all these hearing dates take place, uh, a half hour to an hour before the regular hearing dates. So that's all I have. Uh, very quick. Um, we're gonna have to kickoff with council, uh, excuse me, not council, kickoff with staff uh, at our monthly staff meeting, uh, next week, subject to your approval. Um, and, um, we, we look forward to, uh, another year, a successful year, and, um, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it, Marty, and, uh, thank you for pulling this all together, and, um, really, uh, the planning that goes into this is amazing, and that's why it's successful at the end, so appreciate that upfront.
It's a work of art.
It is a work of art.
It really is, when you think of it, it goes into it.
It's a puzzle, and all the pieces fit, so it's fantastic.
Had a nice color scheme.
Yeah, yeah. I think we oughta, like, blow it up and, you know, put it on
You heard him, Marty.
All right, um, so the discussion item on that. Any further comments, questions, this discussion? All right, we're good. Um, item number eighteen is approval of the minutes.
Did we take a, did a motion get made?
We just need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to
Oh, do you need a motion on that?
To just accept the calendar, cause it involves the
Big motion to accept the calendar.
Thank you.
It's drafted.
Second.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Any, is there any public comment on this?
Nope.
We're good.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Noted. Mayor, you read in the, the, the minutes, but I don't know if there was a motion.
No, I don't think there was. Yeah. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, do we have any corrections to the minutes?
Zero. Read it twice.
Seeing none, nul. Any corrections? We're good. All right, if we can call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yeah.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
Awesome.
Got it right this
Thank you all.